We'll call the Board of Education meeting to order March 11th at 6:00 PM. If you could please stand, if you're able, for joining the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is unified by the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1A official meeting notification, Dr. Royer.
Thank you. Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public. To those news media who have requested such notices, The Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. Roll call.
Ewer.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Barney is here. Loth?
Here.
Medved is absent, excused. Pollak?
Here.
Higginbotham?
Here.
Thank you. Item 2 approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Item 3 is reports, a discussion regarding impact of village Germantown development plans on the Germantown School District and proposed school board resolution addressing the issue. That is myself. I'm just going to use this report time to welcome everybody to this meeting and kind of discuss why we're here. First, why we having a special meeting. I've seen some comments in social media and in the public due to timeframes and of board actions in regards to our district and the village board. We felt it was necessary considering both boards convene at the same date and time next week. It was appropriate to have this discussion now so we can make sure we were heard on the topic. So moving forward with that, I'll kind of go into some more details of what kind of brought us to this point. So as a board president for the last year, we've focused on strategic planning for the future of the district. We have partnered with the village to better understand the development that affects the school district's long-term planning. We have cross-shared board members to ensure more consistent avenues of communication and to inform sharing between the two boards. So just to kind of review that, I don't know if everyone in the public fully understands the commitments that were made for that on both ends, and I appreciate Dean and his board's commitment as well on that. I'll kind of go over some of the sitting positions. So we have Director Kim Higginbotham, who sits on the Economic Development Commission for the village. I'd like to thank Trustee Piper for her initiative in appointing her as a commissioner and as the commissioner chair of that commission. Director Pollak serves on Parks and Rec Commission. That connection has existed for a long time. I previously occupied it before becoming president of this board. And currently, I am sitting on the Planning Commission. We do have Trustee Cuts from the village, who serves on our buildings and grounds as a public member. We felt this was the best spot for her to facilitate more discussion around our upcoming facilities use studies, which Director Pollak is running through that committee. So continuing on with a few more pieces of information. Beyond those, beyond our school board's participation at those meetings, they are expected to provide reports to our full board meeting monthly, just as to update the rest of the board as to what's happening and occurring in those. It's my belief this partnership ensures a monthly and public-facing line of communication between both boards. I view these efforts as incredibly strong step in the right direction. And why do I say that? It's no myth that the two boards have had issues in the past, and we may have disagreements in the future and continuing, but the goal is to get us to work together and to continue to build a strong, vibrant Germantown to attract citizens to this community. And I believe as a school district, we are a large attraction for that. And we would just like to continue that partnership. So we'll continue to grow in that relationship as we move forward. So with that, many potential residential-based projects have been or on the horizon for the village. Some initiated by the village, some others proposed outside the develop, with outside developers. It's the school, I believe it's the school district's responsibility to not only plan for their impacts on the school operations, but also to make the village and community aware of those impacts. So with that, I've invited Dean and Steve to this meeting tonight to participate in this conversation, help us understand more about what's going on in the village. We hopefully will help you guys understand more of how that impacts the district and what we might have to consider as we move forward. So following our normal agenda, we're going to move into citizen comments. I ask that anyone that's making a citizen comment, please keep it to the agenda for this evening. I know there's a lot of things going on in the school district some may want to comment on, but I ask that it's specific to help further this discussion. I'll read the citizen comment notification. Community members and residents of the Germantown School District are invited to share their questions, comments, or concerns with the school board regarding item 3 of the agenda. When speaking, citizens should state their name and address for the record. The presentation timeframe shall be determined by the board president once an indicated number of the people wishing to speak is made. Speakers should keep comments to three minutes or less to allow for other speakers. Wisconsin law authorizes a school board to receive information from members of the public. Where possible, the board may answer factual questions immediately or may provide a written response if information is not available. If the response would not, would involve discussion of board policy or decisions which might be of interest to citizens not present at the meeting, the board may place the item on a future meeting agenda. Comments that may be interest to the school district personnel, and I'll send that to village personnel and board members, or other individuals present, are not allowed. So with that, it looks like I have five members signed to speak. I believe we can get to all of you. We ask that you stick to that three minutes. Dr. Royer will let you know with that time. So starting out, we have Melanie Smythe, if you would like to come up to the seat where the puck mic is. You don't have to press anything, you can just speak and it'll pick you up.
Speak in your recess voice.
Recession voice.
Out at recess.
Before I have my three minutes, would you mind summarizing what this resolution is? Just that you're planning on voting on for next, is there any summary that you could give?
So the item is for discussion and possible action?
Yeah.
It would depend on the direction of the discussion of this.
And it's to do with buildings and a possible referendum, is that what I understand?
No.
No, okay.
Russ, we can't jump to future business.
Okay, sorry.
We'll get there.
Okay.
Help us form this discussion with your hands.
Okay, let me just change my glasses so I can see what I said. Okay, well, I really appreciate the fact that the school district is doing strategic planning. It's something that I have been asking for, for years now, for the village to finish its 2050 comprehensive planning, which got stopped at some point when, I think it was 22, September of 22, they just decided they'd had enough of doing it. A number of things, a number of neighborhood meetings that should have had neighborhood plans developed around them were not completed. So I think it's going to make it rather difficult for certain types of strategic planning to be done in terms of quantifying numbers of properties and potential additional people who come to our village. That's one of the things that I've been pushing for in the current village center. I believe that the master planning has only taken about, us to about a third of where it should be. We don't have a true count. We keep hearing that, oh, we'll leave it up to the developers, but if we leave it up to the developers, we won't get what we want. And I think a number of assumptions were made. We heard that last night. It seems that not all of the residents' comments were included in the presentations to date. And the evidence that I have of that is things have just not changed at all. In a normal workshop and planning process, every time you get a set of drawings, it changes and you see the iterations and the changes because of comments that are made. So I think this is going to make it more difficult for you to plan. The other thing is that because there is a lack of strategic planning, and in my opinion, the village planning is reactive to developers. They've put themselves in that position because they just wait and see what, who comes, rather than having something more clear, which is why you want to determine what it is that you want, rather than just say, oh, it's open, do what you want with it. So I applaud you. I would hope that we would be able to, within the village part of the planning, get to a more determined number of locations and really try and do a better job of the master planning of those neighborhoods. The last thing I'll make a comment about is that I think that the president of the Germantown School District position on the Planning Commission should be a voting position. As I understand it, the position that Trustee Cuts has is a voting position. I see no reason why you, as a resident of this village and as a commissioner, should not have that also. Those are my comments.
Nice job.
Thank you. Next up is Jan Miller.
Oh. So do we use your outside voice, Jan? Because otherwise people back there can't hear, because there's like the air sound.
Rhonda? Is that speaker working? Should be on. Can you hear that? Okay. It's good? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jan Miller, W151 and 10297, Windsong Circle West. I merely signed up because I thought that was the protocol. And I would, I'm so glad you're having this meeting. I will just say this quickly. And I think that we all need to take a pause and hear what the school district has to say about what the impact of extra students will do to the school district and having to add on, build more, you know, school, schoolrooms. And I think it's really important, not having enough space for our children and growing and learning is a problem. I think it's a big problem. So I applaud you for having this meeting, and I hope it goes real well. I'll yield my extra minute to the next person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Scott Heffley.
Wait, this isn't going to work. It's like old time.
No, you can't trade minutes.
Scott Heffley, W159 and 10514, Old Farm Road, Germantown. Just a couple of points, maybe a little different than the other speakers were saying. First of all, we have headwinds going on where people think we're headed for a recession. Maybe we are, maybe we aren't. These projects, these big projects that are going in there, their cost of borrowing is through the roof, which means they got to make money quick. That's probably why, one of the reasons that we're advancing this so quickly, is the developers need to make money or they can't give the other things that they're promising. That's why they're pushing for the high-density rentals or whatever they are going forward with that. I was thinking about this and talking this with another community member earlier. You know, like my house is built in 1988. It's in Old Farm. You know, that's a very popular subdivision. When one goes up, that house is, Tom, you live in Old Farm, they're sold in three days. There's 15 offers. People want to get in the district, okay? So that tells you that it's popular. Now, if we throw all this new stock out there, we hope it works out. We hope it does. We're told, we're told that we have a thousand people or a thousand apartments that we need to fill because we got to get these people in here, okay? That would overwhelm the schools. Just with the Home Path Project landing in County Line, 283 units, Village Center, 416 to 442, and Main Street, 425-ish, I come up with 1,100, between 1,100 and 1,200 units. Now, I heard Home Path say, we think it's only going to put 15 kids in your schools. Okay, that's BS, guys. Come on. 283 units, you're going to put 15 kids in the schools? No. And why do I say that? Because last year, this famous Tracy Cross report that came out that everyone's like hanging their hat on. I sat there, I'm on the Economic Development Commission, we had joint meetings with the Plan Commission, two joint meetings, and the guys from Tracy Cross said the average is about .7. .7 for every unit. Now, even if it's .5, you put 1,200 units, you guys can do the math, okay? 500 students, 600 students, 400 students, your capacity is not there with the schools, to my understanding. So I think that's a big issue, you know? What is the true number of what it would, what this amount of development would put in your schools? Even if you did one of those, that's 400-some, even if it's .5, that's 200 kids that this village is dropping in your schools. Do you have room for 200 kids? I don't know. I know you have, you know, and it was really shocking last night when our community development director said, oh, well, I never saw a study or I never saw anything. That tells you that the school was never approached about, hey, guys, what's happening? This will affect your schools, before we charged ahead and started buying properties and inviting developers. That conversation should have been first, before any of this other thing happened, no matter what it did. That's my comment.
Thank you. Sarah Larson.
Hello, former colleagues. Sarah Larson, Butter Nut Road in Germantown. Thanks so much for holding this meeting tonight and getting the conversation going. I know there's always a lot of back and forth about brief between the school board and the village board. This was a great way to, as they say, reach across the aisle and have a conversation instead of just throwing the stones. So kudos for that. And hopefully, this is going to give the village board maybe a little bit of an educational insight as to what some of the considerations are that the school district goes through. I think the conversation last night was very instructive in how the information was received that Russ was sharing about the fluctuations in staffing in August based on the leases expiring and students entering and leaving after our staffing has already been determined, or at least predetermined for the year. Having been on the board for nine years, I'm keenly aware of the fine balance that you go through and the high sensitivity points to the community as well as to your staff, including available space, classroom sizes in terms of number of students per class, the bus routes, attendance districts and redoing those boundaries, and the staff uncertainty that comes along with all of that. So I certainly am looking forward to what this discussion tonight brings. And hopefully, knowing that you aren't going to have firm numbers yet for a bit, that the village puts a pause on moving forward with any further actions about zoning or whatnot, or even advancing the TID until we firmly know where we stand on what this impacts the entire community. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, Dominic D'Amico.
Yeah, that's me. Dominic D'Amico, West 165, North 10603, Wagon Trail. My reasons for being here are totally selfish. One thing I would like the board to think about is I have a granddaughter with special needs, not in this district, but she's out in Waukesha. And my son and daughter-in-law, for several years, suffered with the inability to get my granddaughter the help and the attention that she needed. And with a project such as this, even with the total of 400 apartments, even if it's only 1%, okay, is the school district going to have the aides and the staff and the ability to have the correct staff to make sure that children, whatever their needs are, are taken care of so that they can be as successful as possible? That is the questions, you know, that's part of what I mentioned yesterday, asking the right questions, asking all the questions and getting as much information as you can before any decisions are made. And I don't know that everybody has all the information. We don't know what the percentage of low income or subsidized to non-subsidized in this project's going to be. Are there going to be senior housing facilities involved in this at all? We don't know any of that, which is something that was not presented yesterday, last night. It was strictly, here's the pretty drawings, here's the people with the Christmas tree in the middle. It was all nice and pretty, but we all know in the end, that's not really how it's going to look, okay? And my purpose is to make sure that those kids get the best possible care and the best possible education in this district that I've been paying taxes for, for 38 years. I do have two grandchildren in the district, and I'm concerned about how it can affect them, right? They're in grade school, you know, they're going to be in this district for a while, and I don't want them to have to be in a situation where maybe my son has to move to a different district because they're here because it's Germantown, it's a good district. And we want to make sure that everybody is taken care of, and all these things have to be taken into consideration by the board and by the community in large, to make sure that that is happening and it happens in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have one more. Dan Conodel, are you?
Thank you. Dan Conodel, Ridgefield Court in Germantown, and for full disclosure, state representative for Germantown. And thank you for giving me the information about the meeting. Glad to see President Walter here, for sure. I've, I come from a, the angle that I like to show my concerns about is finance, strictly financial in the state level, funding of our K-12 systems is virtually a third of our state budget. So I come here to express my concerns that the village is talking to the school district and so that the right numbers can be developed. And we just heard with, as far as, I'm not necessarily against the vision of the projects that the village is looking at, but we've got to get real numbers on what that, the numbers of students that that could lead to for the school district. And then the property tax dollars, if there's property tax, properties that are coming off the tax rules has a direct effect on the school district. And then a further development, if it would be in a TID or TIF-type financing district, those are dollars that aren't realized by the school district for many, many years. So for the school district to do proper planning, and I appreciate you being proactive in this area, that we've really got to have a wide-open communication here. And the school district can then make a decision on how to weigh in and provide the village with adequate numbers. So that would be my concern. I don't know if there's an app for that to determine if it's senior housing versus other housing, et cetera, that that leads to the numbers. I've heard a formula that I find a little suspect so far. I've been concerned on the village level, which I've shared with President Walter, on the property evaluation that's been going on from whatever consultant or individual that it's coming from, it's not good, and I don't think it's correct. But here we are, as far as the school board goes. I want that the school board will have accurate numbers that you can come forward with to see what the effect will be. If schools are going to have to be built in the future, that's significant. That's, we're going to a referendum to build schools, likely an operational referendum as well. So significant, significant impacts on the village residents, which would be much upfront of when those property tax dollar flow would start much later in a TIF situation.
Thank you. That's all I have signed up. I would just ask if anybody else wished to speak. Come forward and we can get your name placed on the list. If not, we can move on. Seeing none, we can head on to item number five, new business. A discussion of proposed board resolution addressing impact of the village's Germantown development plans on the Germantown School District and community perspective regarding the issue. With that, we have Steve and Dean from the village, the similar to presentation, I believe Chris, Dr. Royer has. If you guys want to provide us with some more information. Sure. Around this to help the discussion. All right, thank you. And I'll walk through the presentation, and Dean, feel free to jump in whenever you'd like. And if it's okay with President Ewer, if you have questions, you know, as we go along, please jump in and ask those questions.
Absolutely.
So just a quick overview, four areas that I was going to cover here this evening. One is just to kind of touch base on tax increment districts and how they work, how they impact property tax bills, how they impact the other taxing jurisdictions, and try to address some of those issues. Also touch base regarding village debt levels. I know that in comments, there weren't any addressing that tonight, but there have been some questions and things that have come up related to village debt levels. Then I'll also talk about some of the potential housing developments. I'll talk a little bit about the housing market in Germantown and then some of the developments that are under consideration at this point or may come forward. And then finally, I'll, you know, touch base and provide some comments on the way the village has been looking at the impact on the schools and the information that we do have available. And also, at that point, I think it's a good opportunity for us to listen to what the school board has to say and information that you might have. So first of all, tax increment districts, just some of the terms that sometimes, some people call it TIFs, some people call it TID. To me, that's kind of a tomato-tomato type of thing, but it's tax increment financing. And then the tax increment district is basically, refers to the area that is being used for financing. It is a powerful economic development tool. It is also one of the only economic development tools that the state authorizes municipal governments to use. And basically, what it does is provides the opportunity to capture incremental property tax revenue from tax-based growth in a defined area and then use it to benefit that area. It does not affect the tax, the underlying tax base and the original amount of revenues. So maybe this next slide kind of illustrates that. So if you look on the bottom, and let's take for an example, the proposed tax, tax district 10, tax increment district 10. So right now, the properties that are within that proposed tax increment district all pay property taxes. And that would be included in the baseline property value. If a tax increment district is formed, the taxing jurisdictions continue to receive the, continue to receive the same amount in property taxes from those parcels as you currently do. There's no reduction in what you receive from, in property tax payments from those parcels. However, there would be an investment funded by the tax increment district in infrastructure, things like new streets, new sewer and water lines, stormwater facilities. There may be some revenue sharing with developers from the tax increment district, that's to be determined. But those types of investments from the tax increment district create growth and increases in the property value within that district. And that increased value generates additional property taxes. Those property taxes above and beyond the baseline then go to the tax increment district to pay for the expenses related to the, related to those investments. And until eventually that debts, those obligations are paid for, the tax increment district is closed, and then that value goes into the general tax base. And all taxing jurisdictions and generally the taxpayers benefit from it at that time. So one of the other key things, moving on to the next slide, is the...
Steve, I'm sorry, Steve. Just a question. I reached out to you on behalf of the board. So just to put it in simple terms, if a property is taxed at $1,000 during the life of the TID, we continue to, that us as a local tax entity, we continue to receive that $1,000 over the course of that time, 20 years, 30 years, whatever the TID lifespan is. And then at the conclusion of that, we receive the revenue back that we lost over, as taxes most likely increased over time.
Correct, correct. Or if I understand school financing correctly, since your revenues are capped on a per-student basis, you won't get any more money, but your property tax rate will go down.
Sure.
And really...
So as more kids come in, we're still operating at the level of cost or at the level of revenue that we are set at for that timeframe, timeframe?
Correct. So the but for test and one of the the uh regulations, one of the laws related to uh the creation of tax increment districts is that um they have to pass what's called the but for test. And basically, that's asking the question, would the development would the proposed development occur but for the tax increment district? So um, in other words, if somebody is planning or has underway um an expansion project or the construction of a new facility, um, we can't go in and say, hey, we'll 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 create a tax increment district so that we can you know, use those the proceeds to fund infrastructure projects. Um, that would fail the but for test. So each one, each time we go through the the tech, the creation of a tax increment district, we have to have uh the village attorney um and usually in consultation with our with our financial advisors go through the the question of answering, does it pass the but for test? Now, on the next slide, sometimes there's confusion about what that but for test means and and the myth is that the but for test requires the municipalities to prove that nothing would ever develop there um without the the tax increment financing. Um, and that's 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 actually incorrect. Um, what the statute says in in the next slide is is the question is really whether the development expected in the tax increment district would occur without the use of tax incremental financing. So
Can I stop you there for one second? So if your development proposal was to build the Taj Mahal, obviously, we could say that's not gonna get built without the TID, so you're just saying, hey, if we make these outlandish development projects, then we automatically pass the but for test.
Well, to to maybe use a little bit more of a concrete example, I could go back to TID ten, the one that's that's under consideration at this point. There would be development on that site, whether there's a tax increment district created or not. Um, the the type of development that likely would occur um on that location without a tax increment district, we've received proposals for storage facilities, um o- oil change shop, um, you know, a drive-through coffee shop, um, potentially even some of the apartment units that are are similar to what's in the area now, the two-story, um, you know, kind of uh you know, mid to lower end uh apartment type uh buildings that would probably develop there without a tax increment district. But without the tax increment district, the type of development that that is being proposed would would not be able to occur. Um, where you're talking about higher-end, more expensive housing with uh, you know, higher quality materials, more amenities, both private and public amenities. Um, so that's a differentiation. It would, you know, there would be some sort of development there. But the but for the tax increment district, the type of development that's being proposed would would likely not occur.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure. Um, then moving on, the the next myth is that, you know, tax increment financing increases property taxes. Um, and the reality in the next slide is that tax increment financing does not impact uh individual property tax bills. You know, the municipality and all other taxing jurisdictions levy the applicable property taxes. The total levy amount is divided by the total TID out assessed valuation um at a real property, at our mill rate. We usually express that as a rate per thousand dollars of of assessed value. Um, this year in Germantown, the combined rate is, you know, roughly thirteen dollars per thousand of assessed value. Um, and that tax rate is applied to value captured in the TIDS. Um, and that total amount is collected by the municipality. Now, as I mentioned before, the uh uh the portion that that you would have collected if the TID had not been formed and we were at the baseline, still goes to the school district. That amount still goes to the county and to M A T C. Um, uh, but the but the the increment above and beyond that baseline does go to the tax increment district. Um, so moving on to the next slide, um, so all the taxpayers are paying the same rate. Um, it's one of the things I hear in public comments frequently is, you know, we're giving a tax break to these companies. Municipalities cannot and do not give tax breaks to developers or businesses that come in. Um, uh, they pay the same property tax rate as everybody else pays. Uh, but if they're part of that increment, then the amount that they pay goes towards paying those expenses. Um, so you can look at it as going into two different buckets. If you're outside of the tax increment district, what you what you pay for goes to the village general fund. Um, if you're inside the tax increment district, um, it would go to to pay for some of those TID eligible expenditure expenses. I also wanted to touch base on some of the twenty twenty-five legislative changes. And Representative Canotl here, I think he was uh one of the, one of the representatives who um supported some of the changes that were put in place to close what some people have referred to as a TID loophole um related to net new construction. In the past, municipalities were allowed to include um new construction that takes place in tax increment districts as part of the net new construction calculation that we use to figure out what our levy limits are. Um, and maybe just backing up, I probably should have put a should have put a slide in related to this, but for a school district, your revenue is capped by the number of students. So that's the key thing. The state gives you um a a dollar amount per student that you can spend. And some of that comes from state aid, some of that comes from property taxes. For municipalities, what our revenue is is controlled by net new construction. The state has set a law that said, you know, we don't, we're not allowed to increase our budget or to increase uh property taxes uh based on CPI or based on what our contract settlements are for police and fire. Um, the only increase that we're allowed in our property tax levy is based on new buildings going up minus old buildings getting torn down. Um, so if there's no new buildings going up, our our levy is flat from one year to the next. Um, and obviously, as you all work on budgets, you can understand if your revenue is flat from one year to the next, your expenses go up every year. So that creates a a budget gap that that over time can become can become challenging. So previous state law allowed municipalities to count construction within a tax increment district um uh towards their net new construction. And eventually, when the tax increment, when the tax increment district was closed, we could include fifty percent of the value that was in the 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 tax increment district when it was closed in our net new construction number. So the, in essence, there was double dipping um that was allowed. Now, I'll also point out the village board, um, with one or two exceptions in the past seven years has kept the levy increase to net new construction in the village of Germantown without the tax increment districts. They have not um include, they have not increased the levy as much as they could have in in most years. Um, so the new state law, close that loophole, and it says that ninety percent of TID construction can be included in net new construction. And when the TID is closed, the remain, the the municipality can get credit for the remaining ten percent at that time. They did provide an exception and I'm kind of taking this as an incentive for closing TIDS early. That if if the TID closes before seventy-five percent of the legal term, that um uh we can get twenty-five percent of that value in included in our our net new construction. So those are all reasons and and I know there's a lot of a lot of nuances there and a lot of complexities. But to summarize, the the state law is written very carefully so that um uh it's very difficult for municipalities to increase uh property taxes um for uh for operating purposes. And and the TID, uh, the TIDS do not generally allow us to do much beyond what we would have been able to do anyways.
So, and I just kind of wanna go back to the last time you were here presenting on TID and I presented some information. I think the new changes kind of solve some of the issue, the formula that I presented. And I probably can't share it from here. That wasn't necessarily planned bringing up, but I think what you pointed out is important. That formula comes up with an appointed levy, uh, the equalization value of the mill rate. And it works that back down into um you can plug in a home value and this scenario, I plugged in a four hundred twenty-five thousand dollar home value tax bill provided for that at six thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars. And it, we we talked about this lesson.
Yeah.
And and the end of that formula puts out what that resident is being taxed or charged based off of the net new construction um scenario. And you mentioned that the village has a couple of times taken advantage of that and most of the time doesn't. So in that scenario, given the numbers that were presented for that year, it was three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents at a tax bill was um, that was based off an article that I read and you've talked about it since. And and I think some of this legislation actually changed that scenario to not occur. Is that, is that correct? I guess, understanding my end?
Yes, yes. Um, they were, and without getting too far down a rabbit hole on that. There there were, it was, it was an article by the Mackiver Institute and and the Mackiver Institute started out um with a discussion on a report from the Legislative Council that provides um, you know, a policy analysis to the state legislature. And they pointed out that loophole that I was talking about, and I think that fed into the legislators act, legislature's action to close that loophole. Um, I, in in my opinion, Mackiver Institute did a little bit of a bait and switch with the formula. The the way that they presented the formula was was different than what was described by the Legislative Council. But but um, and again, I'm happy if any of you wanna stick around after the the meeting to uh go through all of that again, but um uh, but yes, you're absolutely correct. It addressed what what the Legislative Council brought up as a loophole.
Thank you.
I just have a quick comment. Um, so obviously, your job tonight is kind of to make it look like TIDS are really good things for the community. My question would be on the the possibility of the a TID failing and the impact of that to a community. Because putting in high-density housing, it's going up obviously all over the place, but a lot of those aren't full. So, you know, just because you build it, it's not like the build of dreams, it doesn't mean they're gonna come. So unfortunately, now if you have all these high-density housing and you want like, you know, older retired, wealthy this, you know, whatever you're trying to um market to, if that doesn't come, then what? Then the impact to the school district, to the community and everything else. What is that on a TID, on a failed TID?
Well, um, first of all, uh, and and I'll talk a little bit later on about the housing market and and some of that information. Um, but in the case of a TID failure, and there ha- Germantown has never had a a distressed TID um or or an issue with that. Uh, but other communities have. There there have been other communities. When when there is debt that's issued or there's obligations that are taken on related to a tax increment district, that's village general obligation debt. It's a village obligation. Um, if the, if the TID, if, let's say, again hypothetically dealing with TID ten here, if TID ten did fail, um, then there would be a few options the village would have available for it. One is in the case of a distressed TID, um, there are you do have the ability then to move funds from TIDS, other TIDS that are not distressed into that TID. And in the case of Germantown, we do have um four other active TIDS which are all scheduled to close well ahead of 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 their their necessary timetable. So that would be kind of the the suspenders to the belts that you would, that we normally build in to um mi- mitigating the risk of a TID. Um, but if everything failed, um, it would be a village responsibility, would not affect the other taxing jurisdictions.
And I guess how many of our TIDS are based on housing versus um corporations and businesses that have come in, which are bringing jobs and everything else to the community versus the risk of just housing that you may or may not be able to fill?
If this TID is approved, this would be the first and only residential TID that the village has.
And I guess that's your risk. You don't know.
It's not strictly residential, though. It's
That's true.
It's mixed. It's mixed use and also it's redevelopment of that area because there are some concerns with contamination and brownfield possibilities with the gas station. So you can go and and look at those types of grants and those types of TIFs that uh would would repurpose that much like Whitestone Station did for Menominee Falls.
But businesses coming in are going to be dependent on also the, you know, residents moving to this district. Because that's a risk for them also to come and and build a business here, right?
Yeah, there, you know, uh, there, no question there is risk with with tax increment districts. And with with any sort of of investment or or development project, there is, there is risk involved. And I wouldn't pretend that there's, that there's not. I do think that, you know, both in terms of the approach that the village has taken in past tax increment districts and development agreements to mitigate that risk um that we would likely do for this future one, um, would help to to reduce that. As an example, um, in in TIDS, I I was not here when TID six was formed. I was here for TIDS uh seven, eight, and nine. And in each one of those tax increment districts, before money was spent um and obligations were taken on, we had signed development agreements from uh businesses and developers that that guaranteed increment. So that we would, we were guaranteed as part of those development agreements enough increment to cover the obligations that we had. And I I, we haven't, you know, gotten to the point of of issuing an RFP for a developer, starting negotiations. They haven't talked to the village board about it, but I would think that would be something we would do in this case as well. So that
Always done in the past.
Yeah, I think Germantown's always taken that approach and always looked to um uh to the developer to take that risk so that it's not on the taxpayers.
So if if they don't bring their increment or they don't build it out to what has been proposed as part of the developer's agreement, then they pay the difference of what they're lacking or what it's not covering.
And do we already have businesses that have made a commitment to move here, whether it's
No, it's too, it's too early.
Um, just to go back to the the failing TID, how would we tell or what are some signs of a TID failing or what does that mean, that a TID's failing? And have we ever had that in the past and have we ever used those suspenders to to pull a potential failing TID up in the in the
You know, um, and I can't, again, I can't speak going back uh too far. Dean could probably talk about uh some of the challenges with TID four um that the village uh adjusted to. Um, I'll, I'll let you address that and
The only thing that's come close to a a failing TIF was TIF four back in like two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. And two, and TIF four was built um a little bit different, under a different premise. Um, the way they built TIF four was they put everything in it and it was a build-in, they will come scenario. We'll put all the infrastructure in, we'll put all the roads in, we'll put all sewer and water in. And all these office buildings are gonna come here because this land's here waiting for them. Well, uh, the back half filled nicely. Um, and at that time, it was Smith and Nephew and there were a couple other um developments that happened uh back there, but the front half always struggled because it had a different zoning of office space. Office space does really well um around uh freeways off on if you look out in Brookfield, there's a lot of office space on a lot of those interchanges on off on. This particular TIF was too far away from a freeway interchange to have that support, so it struggled. Um, and it wasn't covering its TIF. Another problem with that TIF is they tied it to one developer only. That developer was the land agent and the developer. So anybody that wanted to build in that TIF had to go through that person only. Um, and at that time, and and not to begrudge them because that was a deal they made, it was Skyline Development. And they're, they're a good developer, they're a good builder, they're they're around today. Uh, but it it was something that held them back. Uh, so what was happening, because they weren't covering their increment and they didn't have developers' agreements with those that were building in there already, they were able to borrow um monies from TIF three because TIF three was covering its bills and then some. So the TIF three's uh increment was building a surplus and they were taking a percentage of that surplus to cover what was missing in TIF four. And at that time, that was allowable through state law. You could do that. Uh, and I think they did it uh three times um uh to help uh support and keep TIF four out of the red. In two thousand and seven, um, there were some changes in two thousand and eight. At the time of the housing bubble, there were some changes made to the um zoning to the front where it was an office space only, it allowed light industrial and warehousing. And there was also uh with the help of the economic development of Washington County, um, a program put in that if anybody built to the front, uh, there was the possibility of of increment return, a certain percentage that could be part of that developer's agreement. Uh, that initiated the catalyst for Bradley Wash Fountain to put in their building. They had They had owned land in the front of that forever, but they never initiated it, nor did they have a timeframe on it, because their agreement allowed them to sit on. For as long as they wanted to. Uh we were able to uh put a deal together where they received a per- a portion of their increment back to them. Uh that allowed them some moving and additional funding for what they needed upfront for new equipment that they wanted. Uh at that time, and then they built their uh facility to the front of the park. That you could see it visibly from Mecklenburg Road, so that was it there was between the front and the back. The back was more visible from Donjes. The front was more visible from from uh Mecklenburg Road. So when that started, it was really kind of the catalyst that started the success on that park. To where within four years, four to five years, that park was then filled and then sustaining itself. So it went from red to the black, and when it closed, I think two years early, it had about a million and a half dollars in surplus. Some of that was used to pay back TIF three and what it owed, not completely, but some. Um and then the rest was dispersed to the taxing districts at that time when it closed. So that was the only time that Germantown had a a TIF that was struggling. But it had the support of TIF three to keep it afloat, and then through some changes made to the zoning to the front part of that. Park, uh we were able to um recruit and bring additional businesses in that you see today. Which was Wisconsin stamping, Wymer bearing, um you've got uh air gas there. And then there was a lot that was kind of down along the backside that built as well. And then expansions happened after that with uh with uh um the uh the the chemical uh facility and so on.
Two things I kind of take from that and I and a quite follow up question, I'll go with that first. Did that then extend the life of TID three to support TID four?
It uh it didn't go beyond its its regular amount of closing, so it didn't go beyond the twenty seven years. That it was allowed.
If and I don't know the details, but if TID three, if it was twenty seven years, but it was scheduled to close in twenty three years. But then enacting the help to help TID four, did it push it past that call it the.
No, it was always scheduled to close within twenty seven years, what it probably prevented it from doing, because TIF three was uh was very, you know, successful. There was always somebody building in there. It probably kept it from closing earlier.
But yeah, not beyond its.
But not beyond its its range of what it was always projected to be.
Um and then from your just kind of what you were just telling us, it sounds like your approach to TID in agreements with developers is drastically different than. Than what was with four, probably with lessons learned in that scenario or?
Correct. It's now a pay as you go more scenario of of covering those costs and whatever those expenditures are with the developer's agreement. It's not put all the infrastructure in and and then cover it with what comes to to replace that and. And that's not unseen in 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 a lot of other communities that are are using uh TIF. The the put everything into it upfront uh is really kind of an old model, and I don't see it used as much anymore.
More best practice now is that shift, right? Okay. I'm sorry, I I just had those, I didn't mean to cut you.
No, that's fine, and I I guess my my last question, trying to figure out how to phrase it, but. So obviously, the village potentially would um benefit at some point from the added revenue of. Of businesses and stuff coming in here. However, the school district in and of itself does not receive any more funds. Than what we already have. So the issue with that is now, alright, now we have to find room for these kids, we have to remodel classes. We have to do all these other things. What would be the commitment from the village to the school district to say, you know, what are we gonna do to? To be able to support these kids and not have to go to referendum in order to?
And I I would share, I know Stevie, your next slide outlines some fundamental change to communities. And with the exception of Elm Brook, who has the highest revenue limit in in the state. And Cedar Brook, who has a deficit in their budget and is pretty fiscally conservative, all of those, no, and it just went away. All of those other districts have either gone to and or operational and capital referendum in the last five years, so. Though there's not a tax impact on community, given there's a TIF for these fundamental changes in community. Those districts, you look at the Mecklenburg story the last three years. I mean, that's that's a major tax impact now that the school has to bury the burden because there's been a shift and change. Pwaki's had multiple capital operational, Hamilton's passed an operational referendum that never expires. Um so that that would be to Kim's question, that's my concern. We can fundamentally change through a TIF the community. But now us as a local agency taxation have to say, now we have to increase. We have to go to you and say, we need to either operationalize our revenue source, which I'll show early later tonight. That this is what we get and our tax base from our local community is our majority, so we're gonna ask you for more. Or we need capital, long term debt that we're trying to pay off right now to expand in areas that. I'll show data that we're already close or exceeding capacity.
You know, and and I think there's there's some more at the at the tail end of my presentation, I think you, it sounds like you have some as well. I think the the key thing, and it really comes down to the the results of the Roffer study. Is is what does enrollment look like? Because your your revenue is driven by the number of students. So um and I I don't know, you know, I I don't know anything about your enrollment numbers or what those projections look like. Um but I I do know that in general, birth rates are lower than than what they have been. I know that there are also school districts in the area that are have gone to operating referendum because of declining enrollments. And they're seeing that without new development, they're seeing the number of students they have going down, so they've been forced to go to uh an operating referendum. Um so it's, I think there's risk either way. There's there's risk with additional housing. And there's there's risk without additional housing. From from your financial perspective.
Well, but the per student cost or, you know, the the money we get per student is for per student. It doesn't um create a surplus. So we can get more students in, but that doesn't necessarily mean that gives us a surplus to to build or change or add on.
I think I think we'll we'll get to that portion of that in a in a minute. Just to keep, I think you have more of your position, and I'm not, we're we're gonna get to it.
Okay, I have one more financing question before we move on.
Yeah, just if we can keep it to the the TID discussion, but yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So as you as you hear, the big variable is, is there gonna be an impact to schools or not? We don't know. My question is, has the village worked with the developer to mitigate that risk? Are you taking a look at impact fees, school mitigation fees, or school participation benefits from the TIF? Have you have you talked to developer about negotiating developer contributions? And then putting something on the line saying, if there is an impact to a school district, here's how we'll cover it.
We have, well, first of all, we've not started talking to developers yet. Um and just to kind of explain the 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 village's approach to this particular development is. This location was identified in the twenty fifty plan as being kind of a a key area. And as all of you know, that is a one of the one of the most important corners um in uh in the village of Germantown. And the the village board in particular felt it was important that um that there there be more control over what develops there. So that's why they proceeded with the acquisition of the property, because that is the best way for the village to control what goes there. The next step is gonna be issuing RFPs to developers. And I think that is the kind of thing we can have a conversation about is is, you know, including in that in that request for proposals. Some some questions, some thoughts about, you know, what what do you see as a developer for your proposed development? As being the impact on the school and what are your, what is your proposal to try to mitigate that? That's a that's a very fair question, I can.
And that's why I wanted to bring it up now, so there's there's togetherness on when we get to that point, to make sure we don't overlook and go. We should have asked for this or that, so I hope when you get to that point and you start talking to developers, you reach back out to the school board and say. What would you like to see as a negotiated item on this?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And some of that visibility is seen also with uh the representation on the plan commission. As it comes forward and as the developers come forward with their proposals.
I think to that point, I think what stemmed, we we started with a strategic plan. And and a facilities use plan that we were gonna or study we were gonna go forward with. And really what engaged the Roffers report request was some of the discussion from that. And going, okay, we're we could see an increase, but we don't know. We don't know if it's a hundred students, we don't know if it's six students, we don't, we don't know. And we're unable to answer that, so let's engage a reporting agency to to help build that out. And I think to 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 have that discussion grounded in some some numbers. And and I believe we haven't provided that as a district in the past. That's why we're making that investment on our end. Tune of almost thirty thirty five thousand, I believe, or so, just under, between the two studies alone, uh to help provide that information. So and I I I'd bring that up just from that standpoint of the seat on the commission, the economic development. We see how a lot of this dovetails, and it's spurring internal conversation for us of what can we do to provide that information out? Because if we're silent and go, well, we didn't know. Then then we're negligible for that action, right? Or inaction in that scenario, and that's that's our goal is to not be in that scenario.
And my last couple slides address that, but I think that is the the study that you're doing is just very, very welcome and will be very helpful to the village. I'll just go through these very quickly, just wanted to give some background for the history of of the way TIDS have been used in Germantown. Um there were five TIDS that were created uh in the eighties and the nineties. Uh the last one of those was closed in two thousand nineteen. And these numbers are actually a couple of years out of date now, but they've added about two hundred eighty eight million dollars to the to the Germantown property tax base. And just in terms of what that means, um with the current levies from all of the taxing jurisdictions. With without that development, um the the average property tax bill would be seven hundred dollars more today. Without the development that took place in TIDS, without that increment that had been created. So the first one, just so that you're you're uh familiar with it, is over on Landon Road, um right off of the of the highway. That was created in nineteen eighty six, closed in nineteen ninety four. The second TID was on on Freistadt and and River Lane, um not too far away from the high school. Uh that was eighty eight to ninety four. TID three uh was a larger TID, the uh uh Germantown Industrial Park. Um uh uh just uh off of Freistadt Road, that was from two uh nineteen eighty nine to two thousand thirteen.
That also capped the landfill.
That, yeah, did, actually, I didn't know that, so capped the landfill as well. Uh TID four Dean talked about is the uh Germantown Business Park, ninety four to two thousand nineteen. TID five was the Sendix area, nineteen ninety eight to two thousand thirteen. Um we have four active TIDS. Uh TID six was created in two thousand fourteen. That's the Willow Creek Industrial Park off of Appleton Avenue. That started out with a base value of um two million seven hundred ninety six thousand dollars. As of a little over a year ago, it was at fifty two million one twenty three. And there is another building going up there that's expected to close in twenty thirty two. Uh TID seven, which started out as as JW Speaker, was um extended northwest up to Holy Hill Road. Uh was created in two thousand seventeen uh with a base value of about nine point nine million. Right now, there's an additional twenty three uh point six million that have been added, and there is one more. Large building that'll probably add another fifteen to twenty million dollars onto that, um with expected closure of twenty thirty six. TID eight is north of Holy Hill Road. Um that was created in two thousand eighteen with a base value of six hundred forty thousand dollars. Um as of uh January first, twenty twenty four, that was over two hundred million dollars in incremental value. And that uh um at this point is probably at two fifty and and. You know, I expect to see get up to about three hundred million dollars and closing in twenty thirty two. And then the the newest TID was a little bit different in terms of its purpose. It was created in twenty twenty two, TID nine. Uh over on Donjes Bay and Wazaki Road. That had a base value of a hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars, it's now at twenty three point five million. That TID we created um to basically to fund uh about nine million dollars of infrastructure that was needed for the new DPW building. So if you drive down Donjes Bay Road here, um the repaving that was done, that was all paid for. In essence, by the building that was put up on the corner. The property taxes from that building are paid for the reconstruction of Donjes Bay Road as well as the access road. Um into the DPW building and all of the sewer and water work that was associated with that.
Just for the record, it was terrible driving around here last summer, so.
It'll be much better this summer, much better this summer.
And a couple of questions on that. I think there's some thought in the community that that TID paid for the DPW building. That's an inaccurate statement, right?
It's inaccurate. The DPW building as a building was bonded for and was direct as as that has a direct impact to the to the property tax levy.
With the development around it was the TID.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and legally, we could not have paid for the DPW building with a with a TID.
So the last two actions, uh the village has asked us to send a representative to Joint Review Board was on the expansion of TID nine. To Sterling Pharma.
Correct.
I believe our action was in favor of of that, because it would ensure a sooner closure of that TID. Um and the prior action was, was it the Holy Hill?
TID seven.
Was it TID, was TID seven?
And eight.
And eight together to spur. Um some adjacent development. Um that would then support exterior development to the TID.
It was mostly road repair. Um and uh the Holy Hill Road from like the interchange out to Goldendale, including that intersection with the with the traffic lights. Was paid for by the TIF. Um the uh one third of the water tower was covered uh by by TIF eight. Any extension of uh sewer and water to the uh to the edge of the property lines or to the next reach across Richfield. Uh was paid for by TIF eight, and then of the ongoing TIFs of six, seven, eight and nine. Pay a percentage of uh the village administrator's salary. Uh the Department of Public Works salary, a director, the director of planning, the director of water and the director of sewer. Uh and park and rec. Those TIFs pay a portion of that salary because of how they have to interact and interface. Uh with them, so they're not coming from general fund.
So when those close, we don't lose those people?
No, no.
We'll we'll pay for them somewhere else.
Well, you'll pay for it.
No, I just, yeah, and I think you're you're speaking to, I think, a lot of community comments that we've seen. Why are these people's salaries in there? And I think that's great to shed some light on it. Um so in that situation, this board voted in the negative. Uh on the extension. Now, those TIDS were set as a twenty seven year. And they were going to, if you could help me on the dates, they were set to close because they were being successful earlier than that.
Right, it pushed them out two years, but they're still closing earlier.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at. So if, I can't remember the dates or the years. But i- if it was to close in twenty three years and then that action pushed it to twenty five years. I'm not saying those are the the years, I'm just saying that was the scenario.
It added about a year and a half to two years. TID eight was gonna close within eight years and now it'll be twelve. Maybe ten years, now it'll be twelve, and TID seven uh was, as you had said, um. Was gonna close uh probably if you go twenty nine, twenty seven years onto onto two thousand seventeen, now it's gonna close. Uh in twenty thirty six, so it's also gonna be earlier than the full length. We haven't had a a a TIF go out to the full expenditure, so probably TIF three. Is the last time that it ran the full length of what was the pro forma shown. Um TID eight is uh was one of the only TIFs, I think, in the state that was gonna close in half the time of what it was projected to be. Uh but now with because of some of the expenditures needed for improvements within a mile around that TID. Uh we're able to to take those monies that are really now in surplus of the increment. And use it to uh to fund those so that we don't have to take it from the general fund. But it does extend it uh two years, but then instead of closing in eight years, it's gonna be, you know, twelve years.
And and I think at that time, and I won't speak for everyone that voted on it, we voted negative to that. Because that extension, while still shorter than its full life. Um didn't align or didn't align as well with some of our strategic planning needs down the road. Now that extension still occurred, uh as I believe Joint Review went four one on that vote and it moved forward and those projects have.
And if I can just add that what the what that amendment funded, what part of what that amendment fund, that amendment funded was. Um the uh reconstruction or the construction of High Point Pass is what we're calling it. Going from Holy Hill south to the railroad tracks, as well as some extension of of water and sewer. Um to connect with the new Green Bay packaging uh facility, so. So that will that's that i- infrastructure investment will allow for both the Green Bay packaging. And then a truck country development, which will probably have a a total value just conservatively of forty million dollars. That'll and those are outside the TID, so that'll go directly onto the tax base.
As they develop, not not on the actual, okay.
So so that was, you know, that I I believe that's a good example of of how the board. Used TID conservatively to try to not only look at at just, you know, how can we? How can we pack as much development into the TID as possible, but to spur development around it? And and immediately benefit the other taxing jurisdictions and the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Um village uh debt levels, I I'll go quickly through this, I know there's a lot of other conversations, they have gone up. Here in recent years, um oh no, the title's not showing up on this, but this this first slide shows uh debt per capita. Um which has gone up and you'll see the big jump in uh from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Uh and that is basically the funding for the the new DPW facility. Um that facility cost, uh and this includes the the nine million dollars for the infrastructure, about forty-two million dollars. Um which is a huge investment for the village. Um the last public works facility that we had was built in the early nineteen fifties. Um and was well beyond its useful life. Um the facility that we built this time, you know, some communities have have made the choice of. You know, building uh metal buildings or in some cases even uh you see them from the hi- I see them from the highway sometimes. The plastic, you know, uh dome type buildings and using those. Um those are are less expensive, but they're also have very short life expectancies. This is a concrete building um that is built and equipped to last, I I mean literally into the next century.
And is that? Um that's paid out of your normal revenue? You're you're not increasing um your tax levy rate in order to cover them?
We bonded for that, yes, we borrowed for it and that went directly to the tax levy, that that borrowing.
Yeah, the um under municipal finances, uh the debt service levy. Uh because of the way the state constitution is written, is not subject to the the levy limits. Um so uh when when municipalities borrow for something, um if if debt service goes up. Um it uh uh it it's outside of the levy limits. There's two separate property tax levies for municipality municipalities, the general fund levy that that funds operations. And then the debt service levy that that funds borrowing. Uh and then the second, the second um graph here is uh debt as a percentage of equalized value. Which again, it shows the same shape, but you can see it's dropping a little bit fast because our equalized value is going up. Um and then the the next slide is one from uh Aylers that just shows the table of our our numbers here. Um the uh uh the amount of debt the village is allowed to issue is. Um is five percent of our equalized value. Um and this is a calculation, a table that's important that looks at the amount of outstanding debt. Um as a percentage of of equalized value, we're at thirty-six percent of that limit at this point. Which means sixty-two percent of that limit is still available. Uh I don't believe the village would ever get to that point, um but the the key, the key point to this table. As I summarize on the next slide is that, um you know, we've got plenty of of um. Of capacity available uh for future needs. Um and as our debt has gone up um over the last few years, just some of the some of the reasons for this. Um you know, we did hear a a lot, the the board and board passing it back to staff that. Um there were a lot of complaints about the quality of the roads in the village. And, you know, we can see in our our PESA ratings, which measure the quality of the road, that there have been improvements. And we have two big projects coming up on Division Road and um uh uh Rock Rockfield Road. That will should show an even bigger increase in the PESA ratings. We completed the DPW facility, we've had to completely modern- modernize and secure our village IT system. So that, you know, things like our wa- water utility, our our um our police uh software systems. And fire response systems are secure from from hackers. Um we, you know, I I like to say I love nineteen eighties music, I I'm not so much a fan of their financial systems. Um and we had to replace a nineteen eighties era financial systems. Um and we've been maintaining our facility replacement and vehicle replacement cycles.
Sounds familiar, Chris?
Uh so I think.
Great music, but terrible technology.
Yeah, yeah, so I think you've covered all all of that already that we've got. Um you know, we've made good investments, I think, and debt has gone up, but um but it has helped. Um it has helped our operations. So just a a little um insight into what is coming down the road. Um and this first slide, I I wanted to address a question that we get oftentimes is, you know. There are, there are a lot of folks in the village who are opposed to additional housing. Um and of of any type going on and 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 that is absolutely their 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 right to do that, to have that that perspective. Or or um or opposed to, you know, multifamily housing or different variations. So we get the question of why do you keep bringing these proposals forward? And it really is the market that's driving these proposals coming forward. Um somebody mentioned the Tracy Cross study before, which i- is, you know, a lot of folks may not have liked. What the Tracy Cross study had to say, but I like to remind everyone, it is a descriptive study. It's it it looked at the market as it exists and um it's important to understand what the market is. Even if we don't like what what the results of that were. Um so what that showed is that um there is a uh demand for um, I think spell check. Got me on that, six hundred units of um of single-family, not farmland, housing. In the um in the two hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand dollar range annually within our our. Um housing PMA, which is basically the area they looked at, which includes Washington County. More or less Mequon and Menominee Falls. Um so that area, there's a demand every year for six hundred units of housing. Um and especially in that range of two hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand. Most of the houses that have been going up in Germantown are are above that range, um in in recent years, well above that range. Um Tracy Cross also said there is a demand within that area for four hundred units of multifamily housing. That when the rental range is of of roughly fifteen hundred dollars a month for one bedroom, twenty-five hundred dollars a month for three bedrooms. In in our in our area, in our region here. Um and Germantown, even within that region, is considered to be a highly desirable area. Due to the freeway access proximity to Milwaukee, the schools are all make this. An area where people want to build that housing as opposed to other areas. In addition to that, Germantown land prices are are relatively low. Because we do have a a significant number of farmland owners. Who are no longer interested in farming, many of them are, you you know, looking to retire. And that's their retirement account, is their is their land, so they are looking to sell for uh to to see their property developed. Um and as we um talked about, uh within the the village center area. There are a lot of redevelopment opportunities as well, there's some large spaces of infill. Um uh and, you know, I'm sure just si- sitting here, you can think of of areas in the area. Or uh parcels in the area here that could sustain housing if that was the direction that the village and the the school board wanted to go. There's there's lots of opportunities to do that here, so those market forces are what bring those proposals forward to the village. It's not anything that the village is doing, we don't have ads out in, you know, developers or Us Magazine or or anything like that. Um trying to attract these proposals, it is the developers and the property owners who are bringing those forward for the most part. With with with, you know, the the exception being the um. Yeah, the uh Pilgrim and Mequon proposal. So I'll I'll go through some of the specifics that we have in the pipeline. Um one that I think you're probably familiar with, Home Path uh is a developer. That has uh the area outlined here under contract. That is, that's an example of one of the families that had farmed that for years and is now, um this is. I would say in the last seven years, maybe the third or fourth uh proposal that the family has brought forward in an up in an effort to develop. Their land. Um the proposal that they're working on with Home Path would include forty-four flagship homes, which are similar to those that might be. Might see see going up in in Renwood or um, you know, off of Division Road. Um there are one hundred and three pathway homes, which um are a little bit smaller, but would still include like a two-car garage. And, you know, three bedrooms, two bathrooms.
Similar to like a mid-nineties construction, home construction.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a fair, yeah, yeah, probably closer to that.
Smaller, smaller acreage.
Um there would be a hundred and eight row houses, um which would be, you know, two-story walk-up row houses with one to three bedrooms.
Like brownstone.
Brownstone type, um twenty-eight paired homes duplexes, uh so a total of two hundred and eighty-three units.
I think those were side by side.
Side by side.
Ranch style.
Yep.
Ranch style, or it could, the one side could be two-story and then the other side could be ranch.
Yeah.
Uh you see some of those uh sprinkled about in Germantown, I think there's a couple of examples of those on Pilgrim Road. Um, you know, as you head south from Mequon Road. But what's important in regards to this development is a couple of things. They they used the Tracy Cross report as as part of their information of bringing this forward. Um they are also uh pricing their their homes in in a in a area that. Younger families can probably reach to. Um their flagship homes are anywhere from four seventy-five to five and a quarter, and then it goes down from there, uh the very low point. Which would be your uh row houses are probably around two ninety-five. So the idea is to create a step system for those younger families to get their first homes and start that. That home ownership, um you know, of getting your uh your feet in and getting that investment growing. So that you can take the next step as your family grows or as your opportunity within your career grows. But in this particular development, they have those examples all the way through to flagship, the larger homes being towards the back. Um and then this the smaller, uh call it introductory level type homes being towards the front. What is also different about this proposal is um there really isn't any need for TIF. Sewer and water is right at that bottom right-hand corner, it stops right there. So any type of of infrastructure to push in roads or sewer and water. And and we feel there probably is a fair amount of of rock in that area, cause you can see it rise as it heads towards um Appleton Avenue. That becomes the developer's expense. There is no plan uh or or desire to supplement this development within the village.
And to say, uh so I was sitting on the commission when this was brought forward by the developer, this was a developer proposed. And at that hearing, it was simply a listening uh input session, they paid for uh through a permitting process, whatever. Uh for that commission to provide feedback to them, and with that, they then hosted a listening session. I was unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend due to all the other meetings we have. Uh I would say, considering the other proposals we've seen for that area, this is more in line. Or more responsive to what some of the community feedback prior to that to to this proposal has been. I know there had been uh multi-story units, uh commercial down on the bottom, apartments up top. All that type of diff- I mean, that that's the range of development we've seen proposed for this area. A gas station on the corner.
Interested at one time, um the last one before this was um a fiduciary was coming through and putting in. Um uh multifamily throughout with HOA um and uh leasing. And then on the backside of it, it was gonna be um industrial warehouse.
Now, their initial proposal for this project was there will be rental opportunities.
Possibly. Possibly.
Yeah, I mean that's.
It's in their models, they have models out there that have that.
Their business structure and architect, I it would, I mean, that was their presentation. I'm not saying the entire thing, I think the intent is to sell these homes and and do that. Uh this particular location for the school district's concern would impact Amy Bell's an elementary. Now, we know not every kid that would move into this development would go to elementary, some would be in the middle school and the high school. But uh primarily as far as uh grade school children, it would impact Amy Bell District, and that's just more for context for people that are listening.
Well, and as as we get into some of the future slides, I would say this is the 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 proposed development. Or the one coming through the pipeline that based on the housing type would likely have the most kids. Uh and and the most potential students coming into the school district.
In their proposal, they even proactively approached that subject with a hundred and, is it a hundred and thirty-five? Hundred and thir- was it a hundred and thirty-five? Thank you, hundred and thirty-five children. Okay, and that's, I think that was in response to other discussions, cause we've seen us ask that a lot of developers. And then they answered on the fly with a hmm, we think, so I appreciate that developers proactive approach to addressing.
Yeah, from my perspective, this would be more desirable, cause my thought is if you've got a single-family home, someone's planting roots there. Versus renting an apartment. If it's kids in our district, they're probably gonna be there until they graduate, so that's giving us stability that we can project.
And plant, plan around, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Nope, that's all right, then then moving on to the next one.
Yeah, one other thing before that, right now, this is has no further plans, nor have we seen any proposals brought forward to Plan Commission. They've done their consultation, which is normal, and then they've done their uh uh their own um listening session at the library. Where they invited uh neighbors from around and uh and and showed them, you know, the types of homes and and talked to them about their concerns. But we have not seen anything come forward formally before Plan Commission for zoning or for site plan or anything else. So it's it's really very much in its infancy. And at the time that that those discussions would progress, it's not out of the realm of putting into a developer's agreement. That of rentals aren't allowed, I mean, that could be part of the prerequisite of what that development is. And those are discussions and negotiations that happen uh with village staff, uh as a possible coming to the grounds of a developer's agreement. That they would propose to village board as part of this development, um so.
So has there, has there been nothing coming forward to Plan Commission? Because they're working with your village planner in the background, trying to finalize plans before it comes forward, or?
I think they're still in a research, um you know, of of looking at it and based on the research and what they've heard through the console. With the Plan Commission and what they've heard from the residents, they need to go back and decide if they wanna pursue. And what kind of investments they wanna start making towards this in regards to risk or or what they see as risk of of it going through its steps. And paying for those steps and, you know, if they would end up with with that development, based on what they've heard so far. So that, I think it's it's more like that, but at the time that they would then make the next steps with a proposal. That's when they'd be working with uh Jeff Retzloff in the planning department in regards to what they're what they're looking to put, where they're looking to put it, what kind of roads. What kind of accesses would be either off of county line or off of Lannan, how far away are they from the corner? Um you start getting then into traffic studies, if an additional traffic studies need to be done. What are the conditions to protect the neighbors that are around in regards to buring or setbacks or any of those other things? Those are the discussions that would happen um when they would start that process.
And to to the neighbor's point, I think we've heard at that initial meeting, concerns about the size of a development coming in. And and I can respect those concerns because they're in a rural area and they were looking to maintain that. Um I think there's some realities of development that happen when you're this close to major metropolitan area, I don't know how well that's accommodating. Um but for the school district standpoint, we're obviously, we're also concerned maybe in a different avenue of that development. Uh I can say this one does seem to come forward and to that stability level. And impact level in the area of the school district, which is key to, as we continue our conversation tonight. Um is the most interesting to me, I guess, from a school standpoint. Even not a personal standpoint, but as a school standpoint, so.
Um the next one, we've we've talked about uh to a great extent already, uh the Mequon Pilgrim redevelopment area. Uh the phase one would include um, you know, three to four hundred. M- market rate apartments, to the question that that has come up a couple of times, there these would not be. To the question that, that has come up a couple of times, there, these would not be any sort of subsidized or, or any, there's. Anything along those lines, he would, these would be market rate apartments. Um, we are, we are looking at some grants, but those are all environmental grants. Uh, related to cleaning up some of the environmental issues on the site. Um, and one thing I'll say about the apartment, and this may be another opportunity, another area where there's opportunity for some discussion and. And some joint planning, um, you know, the village will have some control over the types of apartments that go in. Um, are they, you know, three bedrooms that are attracting, you know, families, uh, with, with kids and students? Or are they studio and one-bedroom apartments, uh, with maybe a handful of two-bedroom apartments that are, are gonna have many fewer students? Generally, what the developers are pushing for are the studios and the one-bedrooms. Um, and, you know, I think that's been a change in, in apartment development over the past twenty years. Future phases, you know, again, it could include a lot of different things, there could be row houses, there could be condos, there could be, you know, small or lot. Standalone, single family in, in the area.
And as you go further south, that, that large track of land that's beyond that, that outline, um, that's privately owned. At the time that other development would happen, they could decide that, that now is the time for them to sell, and we don't know, but it's possible. And at that time, you're now backing up against established residents already along Lyle Lane, so there would be no plans. Uh, I don't think to put in a, apartments, cause it wouldn't fit into what's already on the backside of that. That would be, I think, more of a single-family home proposal, but it's not really part of this plan, but when you're looking outward and beyond as to what that impact is. And the possibility of, of that, that track of land that's in there, it's, it's, it's possible that that could, you know, fall within fifteen to twenty years. And then I think it would be more of a single-family school.
So for the northern end of this development, phase one, three to four hundred units is the potential of the concept that's being talked about. Um, phase two is the commercial aspect, commercial lower, residential upper?
Um, phase one would include some of, of the commercial, um, the, um, if I can.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, I'd give you a laser pointer, but it won't work on the TV.
I, I'll just, um, kinda point out the, that there would be a, uh, two buildings in phase one. First would be an apartment building that would be over in this area, um, and then coming up this way towards. Uh, Pilgrim Road would be a second building that would include kind of on the end here on the first floor, some commercial. Uh, but then the upper floors would be residential, so most of what would go in initially would be residential, but there could be a small amount of commercial.
Too soon for you to say, but all in for this project, all phases. What are we looking at from a unit standpoint, residential unit standpoint?
Um, I don't.
I, I know that's.
Yeah, there, we, there has been some analysis on what that could look like. Um, I would say that, uh, what's more certain is in phase two. Um, you, you know, which would include the, the BMO and the BP, uh, as well as the Ascension Building. There would be a, a smaller amount of residential that would go in there, um, and that's gonna be very much dependent on the design. Uh, where the BMO and the BP is, are, are, um, that would be all first floor commercial. Um, you know, ideally restaurants, some small stores, that kind of thing, um, with, with probably a second floor with residential. That's probably a smaller number of units, maybe, maybe fifty to seventy-five in that area. And then, um, the Ascension Building, which is probably five years out from, from something being done with that. Um, might be another hundred and fifty units. Now, what occurs going south then is much harder to predict, um.
And, and I think the matchup was probably some gradation to.
Yeah, yeah.
I, and just from continuing conversations at Plan Commission, I could see that easily being transitioned to either some row home. Or a side-by-side scenario into single-family, I, I, I don't understand the full acreage there, how it really builds up, cause it's gonna depend, but.
Row housing sounds, has a, an, I think, a negative connotation to it, cause it's that old school of, of row housing, like New York row housing. And that kind of Chicago row housing, what it really means is more of a, um, a side, uh, where you have six grouped.
Yeah.
Homes, and they could be a condominium, uh, owner occupied, that's not unusual.
Yeah.
You've seen some of that down in Mequon, uh, in Thinsville area as well.
Weren't you talking three to four hundred units last night?
It's, it's a different discussion on a, in a different area, the, the three to four hundred units is what's been proposed by, uh, Juan Brinka. And, and Bailey Copeland, uh, but when you have a developer come forward, they're gonna probably glom onto that and want that in excess. And it really becomes more of a negotiation with them as to what's reasonable and acceptable for that area. Three to four hundred is thrown out, this as a, as a number of, of, of holding, it doesn't mean it's going to be that right now. Because we don't have any discussions with developers, but I'm sure that those that are interested, and now that they've already seen that four hundred number out there, which bothers me a little bit. That's the first one they're gonna come with, but it's always can be, uh, negotiated back, they're always gonna ask for everything upfront, uh, as much as they can possibly get. And, you know, we've been doing this long enough to know that everything they want, they don't get it, and everything we want, we don't get, you kinda meet in the middle.
So from this standpoint.
Hold, sir, 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 uh, and I understand you, you wanna participate, but since it is a board discussion and we've passed Citizen Comment. And I, and I respect your, your want to get that clarification, and we're gonna continue this conversation, but in order to keep it going. We, we can't interact that way, and that's, that's a ruling, right, that's, that's Robert's Rules of Order, right, to keep order for that scenario. I understand your want, okay, but we're gonna, we're gonna continue that.
I, I would just suggest an offer, I can leave my business card, if anybody has any questions, they can follow up with me tomorrow and I'd be happy to answer.
Be fantastic, um, so I'm trying to understand size. So in the, their scenario, and some trustees have thrown out this number of six students, now I haven't seen the report that says six students, right? Uh, that seems pretty low, do you, offhand, do you know, and I'm just thinking of. I don't, I wouldn't call it a like development, but recent development, if we can use that, Germantown, uh, Saxony Village. How many units is Saxony Village, and that?
About three hundred and fifty units.
Okay, so in that realm, um, just preliminarily, so you guys understand. We're showing currently, we believe it's twenty-three students enrolled. Um, for what that's worth, I'm just looking for a little bit of an apple to apple, it's not necessarily, but.
Yeah, yeah, I, we're the, well, and I, I'll get to where the six students came from, but, um. Uh, it, one, a couple more housing developments, and then, then we'll go to the next one.
Hey, I've got a question, Germantown has already purchased property, is it correct?
Yes.
Um, I think the number is seven point four million.
Yes.
What, what, what did you purchase on this slide for seven point four million?
Sure, there were three parcels, um, the first was, uh, the Flower Source property. Which is this area here, um, and that was, uh, one point seven million. Um, then there was, there's this parcel here, the vacant parcel was seven hundred thousand, and then the Ascension Building is five billion.
This hasn't been purchased.
Well, the, we, we haven't closed on it, but we, we've, the, we're committed to.
Village has agreed to.
We've agreed to purchase it.
When's close for that?
Uh, closes June thirtieth, so, um, and that is just, again, traditional background. Ascension has a, um, a, a lease on that, uh, property that's for another three years. Um, and the village will get the revenue from that lease, which I believe is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, and there is potential with that, um, and we've started initiating at the very early levels. Some conversations with Ascension, that they may be interested in occupying some of the commercial space that gets built as part of this project.
Sure.
How, uh, was that financed?
Um, it is, uh, it's financed with general obligation borrowing, um, which in the. The, uh, debt service from the general obligation borrowing can be paid for, uh, out of the tax increment district. But I, I will give that caveat that.
Doesn't exist yet.
Which, which, which doesn't exist yet, if, if that would not be approved, then it would be general obligation borrowing on the tax levy. The other caveat though is the village's intention is not to hold those properties, not to own them, it's to resell them to a developer. So when we go through the RFP process with a developer, one of the questions will be, what are you willing to pay for the property? Um, so, uh.
Part of the negotiation.
That'll be part of the negotiation, um, and, you know, and we are doing this as a competitive process. We did an RFQ initially, and we had fifteen different developers respond. So, you know, uh, we're restructuring this process to get those fifteen developers to compete with one another, to provide the best deal possible. Uh, for the village.
And, and is your expectation that you'd sell the property to the developer for at least the one point seven that you paid for the Flower Source? Or could that be lower?
It depends, it's all part of negotiation, but it could be, depending on what, what is, is, you know, provided back to the village. In regards to lower density or, um, some additional amenities for that development. It's a, it's a, a planned development district, so usually when you have a planned development district, based on, on what you want there as a developer. There has to be something that, uh, is, is provided back to the village in regard to some sort of amenity, whether it be walking paths. Uh, fountains, some sort of, uh, gazebo, uh, some, something maybe in around the market plots, unknown. But it can be part of that discussion based on, on how it is structured as, as a zoning district. And, and the way that they're coming into a planned development district, that's allowing them a little bit more density than straight zoning would allow.
Yeah, my, my perspective is if you sell it to a developer for anything less than what you paid for it, now it becomes taxpayer subsidized housing. Cause taxpayer money bought it and sold it for less than that, the taxpayer's gotta make up that difference.
Well, it just, uh, from, from a kind of a, just a, a technical perspective. I mean, what would happen if the taxpayers within the tax increment district were to make up the difference?
If that's approved or even needed.
If the tax increment district is approved.
Or even needed.
How many acres is the Flower Source?
Um, I believe that the total area is, is it forty-eight acres? Uh, I, I, I don't remember that off the top of my head.
Can I say a procedural question?
Yes.
Is this in the purview of the school board, what we're discussing, I mean, it's not a village meeting, whatever they decide to do, that's, that's a village matter.
It's true.
Yeah.
We're really looking at what the impact of the school district is, I think we're getting a little off topic here.
Fair enough.
Right, cause this, the, this topic was to inform.
Yeah, so.
Right, which, which we're, we're happy to appreciate all the information.
I don't think anyone's asking to, uh, submarine a negotiation that needs to happen. Outside of this scenario, so, I, I would agree, we're probably, we're probably.
I think the size of the property is important, you know, it's a, I'm not asking a question that's not valid. It, it gives us an idea of how many high-density units could be put on that.
Granted, but wouldn't we get into the how it's being financed and such?
I mean, we could, we could, I would, I would recommend in that scenario, we could watch other village meetings that have been recorded. It, in, in, and available via YouTube, cause they do speak to, uh, quite a bit of that. Um, I, I don't disrespect the question, cause I think it's helpful, but there are avenues where we can glean that information. And, and just to keep this.
And I, I can, I can email you with that, I, I just don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah.
Sure. I think the, yeah, general public needs to know.
Well, it's part of backup, Steve just doesn't remember it off the top of his head.
Yeah, it's, it's been in open discussions and.
Well.
It was in last night's packet.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, Mike, I'm not, I understand and I agree with what you're saying, and I do think they do need to know, but I'm just saying we have an avenue. We don't need to use this meeting for specifically that, that's all.
It's not, it's not like it took a lot of time to answer, and I think it's an appropriate question to know. Whether the school district is going to approve this TID or not.
And we'll have, we will have that discussion ever further.
I'm just a numbers guy, uh, twenty-ten census showed twenty thousand people in Germantown. That seven point four million dollars is three hundred and seventy dollars out of every man, woman, and child's pocket. In this district, and I don't really appreciate it very much, not knowing where it's going right now. I'm good, go ahead.
Thank you.
Uh, the, the next is, uh, Blackstone, the golf course, uh, the Highmont Group is the owner of the golf course. And they purchased that, uh, two or three years ago, uh, with the intention of.
Twenty thousand.
Uh, developing it, uh, for residential housing. They submitted a proposal a few months ago to the village to, uh, potentially exchange some, uh, some of the golf course land. Uh, for some of the parkland, um, uh, and that is what we are working on right now. Um, they have not submitted a proposal, uh, for their residential development. Um, I, you know, I do know, obviously, we've had meetings and conversations, uh, just kinda framing the, the discussion. Um, I think it would be something along the lines of what we've seen in some previous iterations. The last one was from fiduciary, that included approximately three hundred studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. With rents in the two to three thousand dollars per month range, um, and that, I, I would say the planning for this. Is probably another full year here, uh, before we know if anything is gonna be happening or, or for sure what that would look like.
Could also be owner occupied down along Main Street.
Yeah, it could, could include or, or possibly even be entirely owner occupied, at this point, we don't know. Um, then there were two other things that have come up that I thought I should just include for the conversation.
Before we go down, there has been, um, uh, conversations that there's a requirement for a TIF here, it's not a requirement. It was through initial proposal, again, uh, they're gonna ask for everything in the moon initially, and it doesn't mean that's what they end up with. But it had been put in that initial proposal as part of this discussion, it doesn't mean it's gonna end up that way, and I, we really don't.
I think, I think.
We don't propose it to go down that road.
Concerns around that are based off of the actions around the village center and what we're seeing come forward. And I know you're adamant, it's not necessarily a TID yet, but when we're receiving invitations to pending joint review boards. Being formed for approval of TIDs, um, I could tell when it's raining outside, right, I mean, that's.
And that would be for village center.
Yeah, but in a very systematic like formation that the village center occurred. That's the same discussion and lines we've heard in the beginning infancy of this project, I'm, I'm.
I understand where you're going, but I.
I'm not saying it is, but I'm saying it's very similar and we can only judge off past actions, so.
Couple of other, uh, projects that came up that, um, uh, over the past, you know, six months or so. Um, one is the Victory Place proposal, not too far away from here, down on Foddlack at Crimson Road. There was a proposal that was submitted for sixty-six units in five two-story buildings with rental rates of seventeen hundred to two thousand dollars. Per month, the Plan Commission denied that application, um, in December of this, this year. The developers informed us that they're revising the proposal and plan to resubmit it, um, a different version of it for consideration. Um, then the other one was at Faith, Faith Lutheran Church on Mequon Road, submitted a proposal, um, on their property. Um, for, well, for forty-two rental units and thirteen duplex and triplex buildings. They're looking at those being rentals with rates of two to three thousand dollars per month. They had a consultation with the Plan Commission and based on that, they're revising their proposal to thirty-six units. And they're planning to, uh, schedule a second consultation with the Plan Commission in April or May.
Um, either any of those, those, I'm sorry, not any of those, all of those that you've just mentioned are proposed by developers. Without village involvement.
Correct.
Unlike the village center and potentially the Blackstone development.
I wouldn't put the Blackstone development in, in plans with the village right now.
The only reason why I say in plans with the, with the village is it would involve a land swap with the village. If the village was unwilling to.
That I would agree.
Uh, unwilling to do it, it would drastically change their ability to, and, and scale of project, right? That, that's all I'm going, thank you.
Um, just a couple of slides here, um, uh, first of all, just wanted to say. I think the, the studies that you're doing are gonna be very helpful. First of all, just wanted to say, I think the, the studies that you're doing are gonna be very helpful to our planning efforts and to, you know, efforts to try to work together more cooperatively. One of the things, as I talked with the Community Development Director earlier today, you know, we were talking, we have a meeting coming up with your consultant in a, in another couple of weeks. But when that data is available, the twenty-fifty plan that was adopted in twenty-twenty-two does include provisions for, you know, updates or refreshing it every five years or so. And that might be something that would be helpful to take this data and incorporate that update, the twenty-fifty plan with that. And obviously it's data that can help the Plan Commission make decisions about proposed housing developments. And I'd just like to put that caveat in there that, that again, we don't control what projects go forward generally. You know, there, there's, there's market forces out there that are, that are driving a lot of this.
Some, some projects though.
Some projects, well, you know what, but even I would say, even with the Pilgrim and Mequon Project, if the village had not, if the village had not taken the action to get involved with purchasing that, there would be a proposal out there for development of that. And it just, it wouldn't look like what the, the Village Board is trying to accomplish here. So, wanted to just talk a, a little bit about demographics. You know, generally, you know, the United States, like other countries, has been seeing a decline in birth rates and the population is getting older. Looking at demographics that, that we've seen in some of the things we've done in the village, the village is one of the older communities in Washington County and Washington County is one of the older counties in the state. So we're, 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 we're graying. If, if not already, some of us, maybe a little more than others, are already gray. We did take a look when you heard, heard that you were hiring Rofor, we took a look and we thought, as we've been trying to find information that would be helpful for us getting an understanding of, of what this might include. So we were able to find a couple of studies that they had done in the area, one for the Watertown Unified School District and one for the Wawa Tulsa School District. There were some things that were, that were in common in, in both of those studies. One, they did mention that in both communities, they saw that birth rates for millennials were, were slowly creeping up, which I think was a good sign. And they did use the same ratios in both of those studies for the impacts of new development. So the ratios that Rofor used were one student for every twenty to fifty units of market rate multifamily housing. The twenty was specific to Wawa Tulsa where they, Wawa Tulsa has intentionally tried to generate more housing, it's not necessarily subsidized, but it is lower cost housing. And I think that's why they used a, a different number for Wawa Tulsa. They said that there's one student generated for every five existing home sales. So, you know, as, as the community is graying and people are moving out of their homes and maybe into, you know, retirement facilities, those kinds of things, when those houses resell, there's generally one student for every, every five of those houses that sells. There's one student for every three units of income restricted housing, which does not apply here. And then one student for every two units of single family housing. So I think, you know, going back to the, the home path, I think you mentioned about a hundred and thirty-eight or some, something like that.
That was their number, yeah.
Yeah, it, that works, works out to about, about half of one student for every two households that they have. The fifty units for, for, for every student of market rate multifamily, that if you take the, the three hundred units of, of the Pilgrim and Mequon, that would work out to be one, you know, about six students for those three hundred, six to eight students if it's more like four hundred units. So again, we're scheduled to meet with Rofor in April, looking forward to those results.
I think we had a lot of question along the way and discussion along the way, I'm not sure if anyone else does that this time. Chris has a presentation from the school standpoint. Does anybody need a break before we get into that side of the conversation, given we've been at this far?
Five minutes.
We have two minutes and we'll be back, but yes, thank you.
To take a recess.
Take a recess.
I'd like to make a motion to take a brief recess.
I'll second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the motion, Mr. Brown with the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that passes, we're on recess for two minutes. At seven fifty-six. Just waiting, there's a couple in the hallway, go ahead, there's. Okay, thank you. We're gonna reconvene here at eight oh one PM and continue this meeting with Dr. Reuter presenting some information regarding the school district.
Thanks, Mr. Ewer, I've just put together a few slides tonight as the conversation's been heavy on the work the district is, you know, obviously we're informed of what's going on in the village, but the work the district's doing to ensure that we have research behind our decision-making and we're taking a strategic approach. So this evening I wanted to share just a few things so that we can all be on the same playing field when it comes to our current state and projected future state. I would recommend that anyone watching or at home or in the audience, join our board meeting next Monday night on March seventh, JP Cullen.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, I'm sorry. JP Cullen and PRA Architecture are coming to share a very lengthy presentation on their work related to our Facilities Conditions Report. As Mr. Cracklaw said, M.D. Raffers is concurrently working with our entities within the Germantown School District boundaries as well as us, we have a pretty extensive data set, we're sending them before the end of the week. That'll be their, part of their preliminary study, looking all the way back at twenty fifteen, student enrollment and growth within the district to current and then the future outlook for ten to twenty to thirty years. So with that, I just wanted to set the stage with, these are, this is our current boundary map so that we're aware of, based on where our, our population is of students, where they fall when it comes to our elementary specifically, because every student within the boundaries that go to our school districts go to Kennedy Middle School and Germantown High Schools. Those are our only secondary schools. You can see that our highest density areas are the County Line, MacArthur area, which sit, thank you, Mr. Ewer, sit right in the village. Rockfield has the most expansive boundary, but some of the least density population. And then Amy Bell is to the west, as we can see as well. I'll come back to this as we talk about a few things. There's a distinction between our four elementary schools, our two elementaries here within the village, County Line and Amy Bell, we would consider neighborhood schools, as some of you have children or have had children go to those schools. They sit technically within a neighborhood. We know that, cause sometimes our neighbors are upset with bus routes and traffic that go through. But there's a, there's a distinct advantage to being a neighborhood school. And I just share that so we understand the difference between our two, our four elementary settings. So they're within close walking distance, home and back to their school, they're part of a neighborhood. And you, any of these schools you walk across the street are adjacent to them. There are, we do evacuation drills, we do safety drills, we're standing in other people's backyards and side streets. And there's a strong community connection, because if you've ever been to MacArthur, and I know everyone in this board has, on not only the first day of school, but in the morning, you have a large population of parents that walk their children to school. So it's a uniqueness of being a neighborhood school. And then what I call our, our county schools, Amy Bell in Colgate and Rockfield off of Rockfield Road, those are more rural areas and the neighborhoods that are, that feed into those areas or those elementary schools are more larger, more expansive and part of bigger neighborhood plots and lands that walking distance to school is not, is not an opportunity. So I just wanted to set the stage, when we think about the previous two slide, the slides, when we talk about our boundaries as a school district, how that relates to the uniqueness of our four elementaries and some of the information that was shared by Mr. Cracklaw and Mr. Walter tonight about possible future expansion. So we, this will be dived much deeper into on Monday nights with PRA and JP Cullen, but this is some preliminary information. This table that I've provided here with our boundary map next to it shows each of our elementary buildings, middle and high school, their current twenty-four, twenty-five enrollments, the ten-year high, and then the targeted capacity. National operation efficiency norms are that elementaries, though we have a hundred percent capacity, eighty percent is what we should operate at, and that's a national norm when it comes to instructional space. So obviously we can fit more kids than what maybe the eighty percent capacity says per building, but that would mean that the gymnasium's completely full at its full capacity, the cafeteria, every space is full. When we look at instructional space, classroom space, we operate at eighty, I'm sorry, ninety percent. Middle school national norm is at eighty-five percent, and high school is at eighty percent. The reason high school and middle school are lower percentage for total capacity is because you have a schedule that's pertinent to specific programming and Bells run a school, right? Whereas in elementary, if you're in fourth grade, most likely you're in your fourth grade classroom all day long. So as you can see from our current enrollment to our ten-year high and target capacity, we see that County Line, we're, we're pushing our target capacity. MacArthur, we're, we're close to our target capacity and Rockfield Elementary additionally, we're, we're pushing that as well. Middle, high school, I'm sorry, middle school, we're already past target capacity as well as high school. We have to think back to the previous referendum, classroom space was added at elementaries and it was redistributed at middle and high school. But we see, as we've talked, there's lower birth rates, and I just did a presentation to elected officials in Washington County about a month ago, we see lower birth rate across not only the country, the state, but Washington County. So we have kids coming in at lower, lower level when it comes to our elementaries that are graduating over the last five years. But as we talk about some of those areas that could be developed, specifically the Blackstone area, that would feed into Rockfield. We can see that, that information there from a data standpoint. The village center area would, any student population that would be accumulated there at an elementary level would feed to MacArthur. And I wasn't aware of the Faith Lutheran one, but that would be County Line.
I just wanna correct, so Blackstone technically is part of County Line currently. We discussed the thought of, of re. Yeah, cause it's right, if you go back to the map, it's right here. But it would be an easy spot to annex up to, to Rockfield. We're not in those discussions, but it's, it's a thought bubble I suppose to have, but that school itself is nearing issues, yes.
And so even though like the Rockfield area in green there is the most square footage of Germantown School District, that's one of our smaller square footage buildings when it comes to that. So just thinking about, I'm just sharing that for future context as you think about expansion and what that impact could have on our highest density areas, which are County, the blue down there, County Line, MacArthur areas.
Just as somebody who's, you know, not involved with managing schools, how does the, the math work from the elementary to the middle school level where you've got, you know, significantly more kids, well, I guess you've got fewer grades, is that, so you've got seven, is it seventh?
Six, seventh and eighth.
Six, seventh and eighth?
An elementary is four K through fifth grade.
Okay, so that's how you're able to, to go from, that's an area of potential for adjustment, but not, not a.
Not ideal.
Not ideal, okay.
A, a typical transition is fifth grade to sixth grade. You see some districts that might build a, or have an intermediate school, fifth through eighth grade, or even consolidate down to seventh and eighth. But when you start to do that, it changes programming and expectations in the community.
Thank you.
Yep. Another area that, just for context and people to understand, the graph to the left is, and I have the twenty-two, twenty-three audited results from the Department of Public Instruction. Not surprising that DPI is not up to date with their current audited results. So I've put, and because it's public record, I wanted the, the most accurate that can be out there for anyone to access. But our, our, our revenue as well as our cost per pupil changes have not really changed over the last two to three years. So the graph on the left shows our revenue sources as a school district. You can see that state revenue in the red takes about a third of that at thirty-one percent. About twenty-one million dollars-ish comes from state aid. Federal revenue is about five percent at three point four million. Local non-property tax revenue is at five point four percent, that's things like. Local non-property tax revenue is at five point four percent. That's things like student fees, parking fees, fines, things like that.
Space rental.
Space rental, when, when we have community groups using our field house or any of our facilities, Boy Scouts, whoever it might be, basketball groups, whatever that looks like. And you can see the biggest chunk of that pie is property tax revenue, which is almost fifty-eight percent. So that's local property tax from our municipalities at thirty-eight million dollars a year. So I put that in context. That has not fluctuated much with our most current audit results. But you can see where our majority of our operational revenue comes from is the local taxing authority. So then if you jump to the pie chart on the right, now you can see how do we spend that money. So that's, the revenue is about sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars per kid. We spend on average, and that's on average thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-two per student to educate them. That doesn't mean when things happen, we're not spending to the max because we're coming out at the end of the year flat with our budget. So if you look at the pie chart to the right, you can see the breakdown of how we then spend that close to sixty-six million dollars for this school district. Instruction, that's, that's workforce, that's staff, that's materials for staff, specifically teachers and educational assistants, office staff. You can see pupil support staff. That's for our special education programming administration, daily operations, transportation, which we're on RFP for. So hopefully that chart, pie chart gets a little smaller. And then facility costs to keep our buildings up and running, and then our food service to provide meals and nutrition for our children. So I wanted to just put that in context so that everyone understood that our major, our major source of revenue is from our local taxpayer and then how that's broken down and, and spent. Any questions on those two charts?
I don't think so.
I know the finance committee does a great job of sharing this information. Another area that, a question that's come up as we talk about possible future expansion specific to the Village Center as well as the current rental areas that we have that re, that feed into the MacArthur Elementary School. I wanted to share in data from the last four years related to our end of June enrollment projections based on who's enrolled to be in school for the following year to our September one enrollment. You'll see that four K in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two go from zero and then they jump. We didn't have a four K program. But this is one of our biggest pinch points as a school district is when it comes to specifically MacArthur because we have transient population based on the rental units that feed into that elementary. And so we can go into the summer, building our fiscal budget for the next year, thinking, okay, we're in a good spot. And all of a sudden, there's a change in July, August in rental agreements, and we can see an up spike in students. And now we're, we're to a point where we have to hire people at the last minute. So quality of workforce development is, is very low. Or we can see that there's a reduction and now we have a shift in class size based on our class size policy where there might be smaller class sizes, which is always good, but then when you compare that across the other three elementaries. So we, we have this conundrum every year of constantly monitoring every Monday morning. It's part of my team's work throughout the summer to see, do we need to add four K teachers, five K teachers, or any other elementary teachers, which also builds instability. I sat in this room today during a social studies review that Mr. Mizziak was running with elementary teachers across the, the district. And one of the conversation topics that came up and I walked in and then I got put on the spot was our fluctuations specifically at this building and sometimes at County Line and teachers having to change grade level every year, which we, we hire the best and we retain the best, but that does put a stress on the system from a standpoint of training around reading programs, math programs, everything like that, as well as employees going every year. I'm not sure what grade level, as soon as I've mastered content and skill and age, now I have to move grade level, which then can lead to non-retention because I can go to a district where there's consistency when it comes to demographic and student enrollment.
That was one of the points I was lightly discussing last night.
So not everything's my money at the end of the day. It's also the workforce engagement, right?
Those are real concerns we deal with.
So then what's the quality of education when every year a teacher's going, you know, and so I play this all the way back to then the schools might not perform at the level, which isn't going to draw people to live here, which isn't going to draw workforce, right? So that's, that's where we come from, from a educational source.
Do you have any, like, any thoughts on what's causing people to, to leave, to come and go that often? Is it, you know, is it, you know, family household financial issues? Is it, okay, so they're, they're generally having trouble affording the rent?
Yep.
Okay.
I would say that's our, the majority.
Okay.
Or people are waiting till something opens and then they can move in right before because they want to come here, right? But then they're gone in a year. So specifically at MacArthur, it's a Title I school and we receive the most federal funding and it's siphoned there because of the highest need. We see a transient population and that leads to a lot of that additional, where I say it's on average thirteen thousand and change for, to educate a student. We see a lot of our resource, special education funds, title funds, as well as general funds going there because we have students that are not in the system. And I can't remember who said it before, but when kids, families want to move here early on and grow up and live here, we catch them early to find their needs. And we can put resources in early versus students coming in and out, and there's high cost that is associated with that. Not that we're not going to educate them, but it's, it's, it's a changing variable consistently.
Yeah, based off the educational process they're given. So you could imagine from one of our bigger school districts, they move in and they're behind not developmentally, but supportively, right, from that district. And then what they get here, we have to pick that up. And we do, right, with intent to get them successful for themselves.
Well, I can completely understand that. I'm just, I'm kind of just mentally exploring what could be the, what could be the cause of the people leaving and if they're, you know, I, just one hypothesis. I don't know that this is true or not. And I'm not trying to debate, I'm just trying to learn. But you, you know, we have seen that, we have studies that show that there is a shortage of entry-level housing, like houses for purchase in Germantown. And one of the things I'm wondering is if people are living in apartments in Germantown, there are not houses that they can afford to buy here. So instead of starting out their family in an apartment in Germantown and then buying a starter home in Germantown and continuing to stay in the school system, they buy a starter home in Jackson or Slinger or Hartford.
Yeah, and I would say, I, I don't know that answer. And hopefully the Roffers, some of the Roffers study will help with that. But MacArthur being a Title I school means it has the highest level of free and reduced.
Yeah, okay.
And so one could equate that lower income housing that's available in that region at a high density level.
Yeah.
That's why we have year after year, that is considered a, we receive, our federal money is, is, is put to that school.
Chris, we would say that County Line is equally impacted by population, but we see a distinct difference in the population. One being MacArthur based with a large portion, but off a low-income rental. And County Line being impacted by just a high density.
Correct.
Not, not high density housing, but just a high density of homeownership housing.
Right. Yep.
And some of the older developments in Germantown.
From the Title I formula. So they, it's, it's a different demographic, but the same issue at the end of the day when it comes to density.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So I go back to this. As you see those numbers again, and we think about what was shared tonight about possible future expansion and, and dense, high-density housing that could, could directly impact that County Line and MacArthur blue area, as well as possibly things that, outside of financials, you know, the district went through redistricting in twenty twenty-one, I believe. That's never a popular thing to do to say, hey, to a family, you bought a house here and guess what? Next year, because you wanted to go to this school, next year you're gonna be across town. As well as we think about, you know, there's, we're in a RFP process with transportation and then the last transportation contract, there was a change on start times at the elementaries for cost savings for the district. And we're looking to hop through the Transportation Committee RFP process. How can we maybe level that out or get times more similar, given, you know, parents' schedules and, and daycare pre-school and post-school? But also some of our schools that get out later, they might have a shorter bus ride than some of our school, based on our current boundaries than some of our schools that get out earlier, but kids are spending more time on the bus. So not only the financial impact of future expansion could lead to possible need for referendum, whether it's operational or capital, but it could, future conversation about expansion could lead to redistricting, which is still not a, a popular thing with parents. So I'm just highlighting things that I've probably already said or we've discussed tonight, but some of the future work. Monday night at the Board of Education meeting at the PAC at seven PM, JP Cullen and PRA will provide an extensive presentation. And then there will be a report that will, will have information through our packet. And the board will be given a very extensive report related to current facilities conditions of every building, thinking long-term, not just one to three years, but ten years out, and what financial implications could be there. So that has, that is big, just to operate, right? Not even thinking about development as well as space inadequacy. I shared some preliminary numbers here. PRA will go more into depth with that as they've spent a lot of time in our buildings with our principals and walking around and understanding instructional space versus non-instructional space. That's gonna be pretty important. You referenced Watertown. They did that work there. I would only say that when we reference other school districts, not everything. And I say this all the time when it comes to funding, nothing's apples, apples. Watertown sits in two counties, not one county, right? It's, it's got a lot of room for expansion. Tosa's a landlocked area. We're Germantown, right? So we have to do our study based on what, what we're gonna get. As I said, tomorrow, before the end of the week, we're sending an extensive data file to MD Roffers. I've been in contact with them over the last week to understand our current growth and then future growth. And I've looked at their reports. I mean, they were, they just did a big report in Cedarburg. They've worked with O'Conan Walk, who's had major growth, right? And had to go to multiple referendums over the last couple of years. So their reports, I've looked at them to understand what the product finished quality is gonna be versus trying to compare because every municipality, right, is, is different. So that's gonna be important. I know Mr. Ewer has shared with the village that once these reports, we know the JP Cullen, PRA report will be done Monday, but when the Roffers report's done, I'm happy to come to a village meeting and share the results and what that impact could look like on the boundaries of the school district moving forward. So I just, I, I don't have forty slides tonight, Steve. So I just wanted to, I'm, I'm pretty to-the-point guy. I just wanted to share kind of what we're working on and as, and as well go back to, I think, you know, a lot of times conversation happens without thinking about this. What are our boundaries? What does it look like within the school district? As well as putting into consideration financials and what we get, what we ask for the, from the local taxpayer and how we spend that money. And then what those ramifications are that are unique to each of our different elementaries because they are four entities, but they're one that feed then to that success at middle and high school moving forward. That's what, that's, that's all I had for this evening.
Thank you. I will continue to open this up for discussion cautiously, but that's why we're here. Just, just to that point, though, we do impact multiple municipalities. So actions in which we have to react to based off a village, I may be going to Richfield, Jackson, Colgate, Polk, Town of Germantown, residents who aren't seeing those benefits and saying, we might need your tax dollars to support those scenarios. That's a really difficult ask and we don't throw the referendum. And Chris and I've had plenty of leveled conversations around what a referendum looks like. How do you get to it? Why would you? Where are we at with our current one? And, and, and the least desire in the world to possibly go to another one? Right? Because we already, we see the tax bill when it comes, comes due. And we get this large number next to ours. And I think you'll have a little number next to yours, given this public safety referendum you ran. The common theory is school districts run from referendum to referendum based off of poor planning, poor management. And we're seeing that in some districts in this, not some, several districts, many districts within, within the state, within the country. We're not trying to be one of them, but actions and inactions occur and, and we may find ourselves into that. But we're not gonna do it without planning and understanding.
And I, I think this board has done a great job of maximizing every penny to its potential. And they've empowered us as the administrative team to make sure that, that money, the chart I shared before, we're using that money very strategically. And we know we've been a low-revenue school district since the revenue freeze in the mid-nineties. There was some change in state aid formula that we were able to increase our revenue limit. But I, I even said before, you know, what the school district or the communities brought, I can, I can provide the data. Elm Brook's made, has been given tens of millions of dollars out of their, the revenue calculation from the state than we have over the last twenty years. We sent a flyer out a couple, two years ago that showed comparables. And we're at the bottom and we're utilizing taxpayer money to its full potential. So we don't want to keep asking unless we've educated, we've planned and shown why this would be a reason we need to ask you down the road if that's a possibility.
You know, personally, I think you, I really appreciate the approach that you're taking too, to do these studies and to, to have data available. You know, and you, you mentioned some of the school districts that maybe haven't been managing the resources well. Yeah, I read through the Wawa Tosa report as I, as I mentioned. And, you know, Wawa Tosa, five years ago, put forward a referendum to expand their elementary schools. And then this past year said, well, wait a minute. Our elementary enrollments are going down. So they initially were talking about closing two of the elementary schools, including the one across the street from my house. And-
So you're no longer a neighborhood school district, right?
And, and then now they just passed another referendum to close the two middle schools. And, and then just the, the kind of the takeaway that I took from it is, without this kind of data, it can be really tricky to see like where is enrollment going and, and what does that look like for, for the, each of the different grade levels?
As we go forward, I know there wasn't a lot of attachments to the-
This will be posted as well, Steve's.
To the, yeah, I was gonna add, make sure it was obviously okay.
Yeah, I'll send it to you. I whispered to Melissa, we'll put both of these revised packet on the website.
Yeah, so everyone has it and can watch it.
Just a question on the, on the chart. So the breakdown on the right, that's just a per cost per student for education. That's not all cost assimilated with the revenues that are on the map?
Correct. That's what it costs on average to educate a student for a hundred and eighty days in the Germantown School District.
Okay. So then the other cost would then be any type of operational and/or, or debt service?
Which we're, we're had to schedule on paying off referendum debt, which we should be next two to three years be fully paid off.
And just making-
Intentionally so.
Yes, yes.
Just making sure that I understand the, the revenue side of how that works. So the state sets a, a per pupil cap on, on your revenue?
Yeah, there's a, there's a formula.
A formula?
And I could bring in DPI tonight and they could talk to us for five hours and we'd all go, I don't know what that means.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we, we have a plan in future, not this next one, but possibly late spring. Brittany's gonna work with Mr. Loth over here through Finance Committee to kind of do a, as an agenda item, School Funding 101.
Okay.
So that we can have that as a resource when people ask questions and refer them to this committee meeting to go through that. So we'll invite you, Steve.
I would love, we'll, we'll provide the caffeine on that one.
Pop your popcorn.
I hate to say it, but this is the kind of thing I do for fun. So I, I would enjoy learning more about that.
Yep. And again, fair isn't always equal. Everyone, it's different based on your, your, your local, you know, tax levy, your mill rate, and then your revenue limit that was set by the state back in the mid-nineties.
You know, and that's one of the complaints that I would have about the way the state handles municipal finance is that it was basically, that your, your base was set at a point in the distant past. And there's variations between, you know, West Bend, where West Bend is and where Germantown is. And that gets built in. So there, there's, you know, there's not a lot of flexibility for the communities to, to adjust either up or down. It's kind of, you're locked into where you were fifteen years ago.
Yep.
I think, I think a real key point though is the school district is extremely limited. And, and really our way to, to obtain more funding is a referendum question to the residents, whereas village finance is quite a bit more flexible. Pluses and minuses to those scenarios, I think, for, for sure. But realities of the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Have a question.
I do. Can you back up to the capacity chart?
So MacArthur here is within.
What, MacArthur?
Current.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're at our 10 year high and we're pretty close to our target capacity. Using the information that was in last night's planning commission packet, your consultant listed the average number of school age children per 100 units. Some are between 22 and 27 for apartments. I think that's probably on the high end versus other estimates that we found or heard. Well, let's just say worst case scenario, we've got somewhere between 22 and 27 school age kids per 100 units. So over 300 units in the Village Center, we're looking at 66 to 83. And if we can assume half of them are at elementary and the other half are at middle and high school, that's going to be somewhere between 30 and 40 new kids headed towards MacArthur. Potentially, worst case, I would think. So that would put us right at capacity. And I guess my follow on question or statement, that was statement, follow on question is, has there been a traffic study done for traffic that would be heading from Village Center north on Pilgrim? Another 40 cars in the morning trying to get their kid to school?
Well, to answer your second question first, yes, there was a traffic study that that was done. It didn't specifically address the, the, the question of, you know, kids, people taking their kids to school. But just a, a general traffic study was done. You know, and this is where like, I, I, I think it's, it's really great. And it's really important that you all made the good decision to go ahead with that, with, with these studies. Because as, again, as I went through the Wawa Tosa example, you know, what they didn't take into account when they were looking at things like you are, like, well, we've got all these developments coming in. And the population of Wawa Tosa is growing at a faster rate than the population in Germantown. It's growing about 4% per year. And if you drive around down there, you see all kinds of apartment buildings going up. But they, they overestimated the, the number of, of kids that were coming in from the apartment. And they didn't take into account the declining birth rates of the, of the, of the aging population that was there. So there's, there's pieces moving in multiple directions here. And that's where I think, you know, getting somebody who's an expert at doing this, like, like Rofer into, to do that analysis is important.
Is that traffic study something that's been done recently specific to 300 plus units being put on that corner?
Yes, yeah. And I believe that's available on our website, but I can also email you a copy of it.
That'd be great.
Cause that's already a zoo.
Yeah, going to the school in the morning is.
Or in the afternoon, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in the middle of the day, it can be, I mean, it's just the fluctuation of traffic there.
And I, I'll also say the state of Wisconsin is redoing that intersection, I think in 2026 is it? And then we'll be, then we'll be enhancing it and improving it. So as, separate from any of these conversations.
Well, if you let the state do it, they're going to.
School buses and roundabouts. Extended length vehicles are doing really well. Can we get a diverging diamond while we're at it? No, absolutely.
I guess just looking at this, the chart here, we're already at or over our target capacity. So any kind of, you know, development is going to 100% affect our school district. So knowing that moving forward, it has to be addressed. It can't just be, we can look at this later because, you know, 10 students in Germantown High School, we're already over.
And I would share it on that point, Ms. Higginbotham, or Ms. Higginbotham is that the board and with recommendation from an administration two years ago, we, we put into place policy class size. And we did that based on area norms to try to keep the workflow for our staff not at something crazy. So if we do exceed the industry norms when it comes to capacity that are outlined here, we would probably have to look at policy to increase class size. Because you can continue to fit kids into a building. It's just having 25 kids a day in your class to now 30.
And then we're talking about quality of.
And then, yep, of what, what are we retaining for workforce?
And that's, that's reflective too, and we talk about this on our board all the time, reflecting the community values. And I, I know some people like to interpret my definition of that differently than what it clearly is. But in that scenario, in this scenario, what I mean when I say that is the community values. That's, that's the parents' expectations, the student experience and our staff's experience at a manageable load. And, and, and we're committed to, to keeping that respectful of those teachers. Because the, the better they are equipped to teach that correct load of student, the better experience in, in educational process that student has.
That's a, sorry to piggyback on your point.
More questions, thoughts?
I guess for me, our, our next agenda item is going to be possible changes to our meeting schedule. It, and some of that's based on.
Before, before we get to that. And as I say that, I lose my thought, unfortunately. Go ahead, sorry, sorry. I, there was a good thought.
With the village adding extra meetings, it seems like you are, you know, gas pedal to the floor on the Village Center project. What's the rush?
Once, and, and these are my words as, as recommendations to the board. And the, the board will ultimately have to make decisions on that. But once the decision was made to move forward with this, there's cost to holding the properties. There is, you know, there's, there's costs to waiting. So it's in the financial interest of the, the village to get rid of these properties and give, give, give them over to a developer, you know, as expeditiously as possible. So that's the, the main reason for, for trying to move things quickly.
I got back to my thought. So when we discussed the TID earlier, was a large portion of the conversation. And I think we highlighted, and you highlighted, the current taxation that there stays with those municipalities that are taxing. And, and that's, that's good. I think that's a misunderstanding from a lot of people. What we don't get and how the TID's paid for, right, is, is the, the inflationable tax, whatever we want to call it, that occurs as development occurs. Maybe I'm not meaning inflation in the common sense, but you understand what I'm saying. As we have students move into that TID, right? The one thing we don't realize then, while we do still get our state aid, we don't realize that funding gap issue that would come via the revenues for the life of that TID, whether it's 20 years, 27 years. So each kid in there is technically funded at a deficit compared to other kids. And I don't mean, we fund them at a deficit, but we are at a loss of dollars to ensure that educational equity across all students there.
So what you're saying.
Would you say each one is then worth $9,500?
What's that?
Would you say each, each student additional from that TID district would be $9,500 additional cost to you?
Absolutely.
Yes.
And I point over there because that's my finance chair and my superintendent.
That's how it works. So the, the red is the state monies, which by the way, we're all state taxpayers also. So it's not like we're getting dollars for nothing. The federal dollars are ours also. You know, we're paying those dollars. And what's in blue is for every additional student we get, what's in blue will get spread across the entire school district.
I liken it to the conversation we have around open enrollment. So one way a school district, and Chris and I've had many conversations, this board has had many conversations on this. Open enrollment is a way commonly used in districts to, to normalize enrollment levels. Unfortunately, when you bring those open enrollment students in, a portion of their dollars stay at their home district. And you're doing that as a deficit, which can actually be clearly a downward spiral if you overpopulate via open enrollment. Just as a simple kind of a comparison when we're, when we're discussing the funding.
And the pitfall to that, that's, so you get a, you get a standardized cost from the state for an open enrollment in student. Not even talking about open enrollment out where you lose money. But to Russ's point, some districts use that to stabilize staffing numbers and enrollments because they might be a declining district. But then three, four years of doing that, they're going to an operational referendum to op, so they can operate to continue to keep, pay staff and, and run their building. So there's, it's a balancing game and it's a decision that locally has to be made of. Are we using open enrollment to, for a positive or for, to make sure that we keep class size low? Or stabilize our staff?
There's, there's a, there's a, sometimes it's viewed as an ugly term. I don't find it to be, but it's right sizing a district, which is what your school, homeschool district is going through. And we see West Bend having some very difficult conversations about, we're all going to referendums in face of those conversations of needing to right size or potentially need to right size. And they know. And, and these are all those things that we're trying to head off. And we don't want ebbs and flows and we want a, a stable scenario. And one thing that could cause us to have to expand one moment, depending on economy and, and, and life could flip before that's finished being paid off to, to your homeschool district scenario, right? They're still paying for those referendums, but now they're closing those things at additional cost to close them, which is.
Infuriating.
As a taxpayer, and thank you for bringing that lead to it. I, I would be, and I think everyone in this room and community would be. So that, that's really what the genesis of this conversation is and why the last nine, 10 months, I've been hammering this relationship and sometimes to attention point. But, but really with that, that thought process in mind.
Well, one of the, is, is, as I get direction from the board, I know that the board, board is concerned about the impact on the schools. And I think hearing what we've heard tonight, there are some things that we can research and explore on, on our end and, you know, give, give feedback to the board in ways that we may be able to help, you know, mitigate some of the impacts that you're talking.
I guess, I guess on behalf of the board and the school district and as someone who does a lot of work related to research, that term now in the world is used very lightly. When people come forward and say, well, our research says, show us the study. Because to throw an arbitrary number out that it's only going to be six kids or 29, what's the study and what's the lifespan of that study? So that we have informed decisions or you can come to us and say, this is, this is accurate or we believe it's within statistical significance one way or the other. Because that's, that, I guess that's our biggest concern. That's why we vetted multiple vendors to think about who we're going to use to do these studies and the success that we've seen in other districts with their municipalities as well.
I don't think I have too much more. Does anybody else? We've, we've talked about any trace?
There's a lot of things.
I think, I think that's the scenario.
You know, I'll ask this question because this, this is always something that I kind of wonder about the thought process going in. When you were reviewing the, the TIDs that do exist, I would say by far the majority of them, when you explain the area, the goal, et cetera, and you see the boundaries make sense. I think with this one, where I'm kind of stuck is what was the reasoning behind how it was drawn? Obviously, there's the southeast corner that is a lot of activity there. But kind of why, why do we go a little bit out? There's got to be some reasoning there.
To what, why do we go across north of Mequon and then to the northwest corner?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, because this, this seems from a guy who is not involved at that. On the surface, the focus is on that southeast corner. Okay, that makes perfect sense for what you've described as the village wanting to, to take a little bit more control over what gets developed there. Like that whole logic, that whole argument, perfect sense. But what's, why the extra little space? What's the reasoning behind that?
Well, I think two, two factors. One is kind of from a, from an aesthetic factor that, you know, particularly when you talk about the, the, where the associated bank is across the street. You know, that is also a critical corner. If you have one corner looking spruced up and, and, you know, with all the accoutrements that, that could potentially occur, you know, over the next 20 years, it'd be nice if that, if, if that, the opposite corner could, could have something along those lines as well. And I think that you can kind of extend that down Mequon Road where that same thought process is there's, there's a number of properties, not all, but a number of the properties that over the next 20 years could be redeveloped into something of, of a higher value in, in terms of, of contribution to, to the aesthetics of the community. And then the second part of it is, is financial. That because those were areas, then as you look at them, that over the life of the TID could be redeveloped, that's not built into the estimates for the TID. But when I talk about like belts and suspenders and risk mitigation, by taking those areas that, that over the life of the TID are, you know, have high, high potential to be redeveloped, that would add to the increment and shorten the time that it would take to, to pay the TID down. So, you know, you can make counter arguments. You can say, well, make it as small as possible, take those spots out. But that was a thought process that went into the boundaries that are, that are proposed.
And I, I think you'd said associated, I think you meant Chase.
Chase, I'm sorry. Chase, thank you for.
Shows how long he's been here.
See, look at that. I thought that was a great question. Is that a strategy unlike, similar to adding Sterling Pharma to the previous TID we talked about? It's just preemptively doing it? Or are you saying you're anticipating or potentially we could see a, a need to extend the TID west at some point to spur, not development, but I'd call it redevelopment of the, the, the retail locations along that?
You'd have to go through the approval process again as an amendment to that TID. So right now you, you're looking for, Aylers is looking for ways to, to help keep it cost within the pro forma as, you know, the best pro forma, as they break it down into, to the years and the cost within it. If there would be a need to extend it, let's say for whatever reason you wanted to include Sendix, then you'd have to reopen it up to, you know, the joint review board and go through that whole process of, of why that is and go through the, what for process again. And, and it's usually, you, you're limited as to the number of years you can do that and amend it. And that's why you usually want to try to set it within where you want it to be early rather than try to go through that, that process again and again for each time. And again, it also shows, I think, when you're looking at the life of a TIF, which is anywhere from 20 to 27 years, and now in five years you're going to revise it, that, that shows, you know, short sight in this in regards to what, what really was going to happen versus what you proposed was going to happen.
Sure.
What are some of the other tools in your toolbox that you can use to do similar type of things where, where, and I'll use this as the example, maybe it's not the best example, but you mentioned that there, there would be other development there. It's not necessarily from the village board's perspective or vision, not really what they wanted. But is there, are, are there other things to avoid having to go to a TIF, TIF, TID? That might not apply to this particular situation, but when other things pop up where it's like, okay, you know, Dean, you had mentioned, you know, right now you're not envisioning Blackstone to, to include that. But, so what are the other things to help move that project forward in theory? That you guys could go back and say, well, this is, this is what we would like to do?
You know, there's, there, we're, like you, municipalities are creatures of the state. And we, the only tools that we have in the toolbox are the tools that the state gives us. And they are very limited in Wisconsin. You know, we have some small things. We, we work with Bank 59 on, on a, on a small, and I know Ms. Higginbotham and the Economic Development Commission is familiar with it. We do up to $25,000 low interest loans. We work with Economic Development, Washington County on some of the larger loans that they have available.
Through their RLO.
Yeah, through their revolving loan fund. You know, the, we, we have worked in the past, actually, we worked with Wisconsin Economic Development Commission on the expansion of MSG in the business part. But most of those other like state and county programs are really much more geared. But most of those other like state and county programs are really much more geared towards, um, job creation in the manufacturing center, uh, sector. You know, for this type of thing where we're talking more about, um, you know, and as you looked at that list up there of, you know, Mequon, Cedarburg, Monominee Falls, all of those places. What they've really used the TID funding for are some of these, you know, amenities for the community. You know, whether it's, um, you know, trails and, uh, things like that, that, and, and to try to attract the things that, that, um, that the residents want. You know, I've heard my seven and a half years here, every, every community, well, I shouldn't say, most of the community, community meetings I go to, I hear folks on, we want more restaurants, more places. We can take a family to sit down and, and, and eat to, to attract those kinds of places is, you know, uh, we really don't have many other tools besides this.
Besides going out for bonding, you know, or borrowing. Um, if, if other businesses in other areas of the village want to expand or, or, or develop, you know, we do have the ability for industrial revenue bonds where they get our percentage of interest for what we get for bonding. And, you know, and we hide, we, we have the highest rating. There is an advantage to, to a business and we've extended those, not so much lately. But, uh, in the past, um, to, to several companies that have been within, uh, uh, the industrial park, uh, which is up towards, you know, the freeway or by, um, QuickTrip. Or down towards the, uh, um, the business park, which is, you know, off of Mequon and, and, uh, the one forty-five area. And, and they've taken advantage of that. The TIF, the TIF nine for, um, for the, uh, the chemical company is, uh, was put together with Economic Development in Washington County to help to try to expand their, their incubators that they have there for, for, you know, combining compounds. And the, the, uh, the push was to, that company was thinking of putting in, in a couple of other areas and they all play that game and we all know it. But they're a very strong, um, taxpayer here. They're a very strong manufacturer and, uh, and employer within the village. So we, we thought it was a good opportunity to extend it across the street. It, right now, it's, it sits and it's up to a certain point where it may be just pulled back because we haven't seen anything that has happened beyond that. We, we keep asking the question and they keep saying they're going through their, their due diligence. But if after so long that it, nothing happens, then we just pull it back and, and it goes back to the way it was before. It will go also back to the, the life of what it was before without those, that increment, and we're hoping that doesn't happen, but it, there is that possibility.
Yeah, but I guess what you, by pull it back, you mean shrink it back to its initial size?
Right, to where it was. But again, that would go back to the joint review board and it would be an amendment to the TIF.
Sure.
But if it's not gonna be of use, why?
Yeah, if they're not gonna go forward with using it, okay.
We change that boundary back to the way it was before. And it, it was probably one of the more creative ways that we've come up with, uh, for using those type of funding and borrowing for the Department of Public Works building. In fact, it was innovative enough that where Steve was asked to come and speak on it at, um, at a conference that was held up in the Dells.
Yeah.
Uh, because other communities haven't used that process before to help cover some of their costs. So they wanted to learn about it and what it's, how it worked and how we were able to put it together.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Barney?
Well, by the time we meet in April as a board, this project could be, I don't know, almost in the books, so to speak. Could have joint review board, maybe even, you know, village board approval, back to joint review board for whatever approval they have to do. All before we've seen the results from the M.D. Roffers report. Based on that, I'm gonna propose that this board makes a statement requesting that the village slow down or pause until we have that data and we can particularly respond with, hey, here's gonna be the net impact on the school district. And along those lines, and based on the agenda item, have a resolution prepared that we can discuss, review, maybe adopt.
No, I think there's copies, right? There's enough copies for everybody? Okay.
When is your April meeting?
Are, currently it's proposed for, it's been approved for April twenty-eighth. Not that we can't run another meeting like this and call at any time, but that's what's board approved.
Yeah, so just for the record and for the audience here, I'll, I'll read what was just handed out. Uh, resolution of the Germantown School District, School, Wisconsin School District. Whereas the Germantown School Board is committed to a strong working relationship with the Village of Germantown to assist both in strategic planning to achieve the best positive outcomes for village residents and the students of the Germantown School, School District. And whereas the school board has commissioned an enrollment study scheduled for completion in April twenty-twenty-five. And whereas the school district is nearing the completion of a facility use study to better understand the capacity and condition of current facilities. And whereas these studies will be used to guide the district's strategic planning process and to provide factual data to our community partners such as the Village of Germantown for use in their planning processes. And whereas single-family homes contribute to the stability of a school district's enrollment. And whereas the village has seen an increase in residential development proposals anchored in high-density rental-based units. And whereas several residents of the village have expressed concerns regarding the construction of additional high-density rental units within the Village of Germantown. And whereas some residents of the village have expressed positive feedback of portions of the commercial and community gathering spaces of the potential project, but have not been presented with the potential totality of the effects that continued high-density developed, developments may have on the residents. And whereas the current level and location of the village, villages' current inventory of high-density rental units cause a high level of financial strain on the school district. And whereas the proposed village center project will impact the same areas currently impacted by the majority of the village rental units. And whereas the introduction of hundreds of new apartments represent a significant step towards transforming the Village of Germantown into a community akin to metro Milwaukee communities. And whereas presentations about several high-density rental-based units to the village board, planning commission, and community related to the village center project have consistently misrepresented the school district's position on this development. Now therefore be it resolved, resolved that the Germantown School District respectfully requests that the Village of Germantown not take any action to approve or permit any advancement of the village center project or otherwise allow the project to move forward until such time as the school, German, uh, excuse me, Germantown School District's enrollment and facility studies have been completed and the district has had sufficient time to thoroughly analyze the studies and to understand the potential impact continued high-density residential developments may have on the district and its educational community, including but not limited to the district's infrastructure and finances. So, there you have it.
So this isn't an ask to stop the project, it's an ask, ask to slow down so this data can be input into the decision?
It's a request to essentially pause it right now until we get all of our reports back and then can articulate the impact of those to the village. So that they, they fully understand what their actions mean as an impact to the school district.
Before we go into discussion on this, uh, enter, I guess we'll have to entertain a motion to get to it. So I'll entertain a motion, uh, in regards to.
So moved.
Mr. Loth with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion?
There's, uh, there's a lot of items and trying to not to extend the, uh, board meeting, you know, well to the midnight hour. But, um, you know, there's a lot of history to, uh, TIDS or TIFs. And I had to learn about them when I first was elected to the school board, as I'm sure Tom Barney did also. And it, it turns out that TIDS or TIFs were first started in California. And of course, California is the place where all bad things occur and then they tend to migrate east. You, you, you can see what kinda shape California's in right now. But TIDS were meant for blighted property, not for greenfield construction. So, and, and I, I think purchasing the Ascension Building is, is yet another category that we haven't seen before. Where now the intention is to tear the building down to build something else there. So that's not only, it's not blighted, it's not greenfield, but it's something else completely different, which strikes me as being odd. Now, I, I guess we could consider the flower source property blighted. It's not being taken care of that I know of, although it's not really an eyesore either. I drive by it quite often and glance over there now and then and wish I could buy wood chips there. But, you know, that's, that's no more, right? It's not, it's not that way anymore. So, uh, it was pointed out to me as I was walking out on the break, a citizen looked it up and that, uh, flower source property is fifteen acres. It's not forty-something, it's fifteen, fifteen acres. And, you know, I thought we had established the property size in Germantown with the Kinderberg property. There were, there was fourteen point six acres there and we were able to, uh, sell it to a developer to build sixteen single-family homes on it. Now where I'm going with that is, no one moves to the suburbs for high-density housing. Everyone moves to the suburbs for single-family homes with large lots and good schools. And I can say for myself, that's why, uh, my wife and I, uh, moved our family here, good schools and a large, large lot. So this high-density housing that's being proposed all over Germantown just doesn't match what citizens want. You know, it's just doesn't match. The other part is, the school district in the past has approved some TIDS and has rejected others, but the TID always gets passed. And, but the TIDS have always been industrial or commercial. So it's a place where, you know, if you go industrial or commercial on a TID, our own residents could possibly get jobs there. And I don't think anybody's gonna argue with that. Uh, we might have people coming from elsewhere to work in, in those industrial parks. They might spend money, you know, at local businesses, you know, on their way to work or way home from work. But, i- you know, if somebody moves to Germantown because of an industrial TID, that's great. They've either purchased a single-family home hopefully, or they're building a single-family home. But the TID itself is not generating high-density housing with several hundred homes or residences. So an industrial TID is much more acceptable, even if it's in a greenfield property to the school district, I would say, than a TID that is, its purpose is to put in, you, you know, high-density housing. And that, that slide, uh, with the, uh, the pie chart with the, uh, the big blue spot on there, that's the Germantown taxpayers. You know, that's money coming out, out of our pockets and it's one of the reasons why when you look at your tax bill, the Germantown school portion is much bigger than the Ger- the Village of Germantown portion, because we've got a lot of labor, we've got a lot of teachers that we hired to teach all the students we have now. That blue portion isn't gonna get smaller, uh, with someone, w- w- with a high-density housing going in place. You know, it's not how it works. So, I don't know why we're proposing high-density housing. Maybe, maybe the flower source isn't the right spot for single-family homes. You know, I kinda think maybe it's not just where it sits. But when I see a fifteen-acre property, I'm looking at that and saying sixteen single-family homes, just like Kinderberg, the Kinderberg Development. You know, it's, the sewers there and note that the Kinderberg Development was not a TID. You know, the sewer is right there out in the road in front of the subdivision. The developer had to run the sewer and water and power into that fifteen acres. But it wasn't that expensive and they included the cost in the cost of the lots and the school district. While we don't exist just to collect taxes, but the school district has been collecting taxes on those sixteen homes from day one. We don't have to wait twenty-five or thirty years to collect those taxes. That's what's going on here. So, I don't know, I think I've covered all the bases. You know, in, in, in industrial versus industrial, commercial versus residential.
I'm going a different twist on your point. When the school district had land at Kinderberg, the most we could get on the roughly fifteen acres was sixteen homes. Now that the village has their own fifteen acres, they wanna put three hundred units on it.
Right. So, the, the sixteen homes made the property worth quite a bit less than we originally were asking for it. And it's not that we're a bunch of idiots in the, on the school board, y- you know, we, we, we owned that property for a certain length of time. It was of no use to the community whatsoever. We checked once, believe it or not, to, we, we wanted to do something with it. We, we checked to see if we could put a dog park on it, but it would've cost two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to clean it up. The next fear I had was with the noxious weeds and trees growing on it, I was expecting the Village of Germantown to come after us and clean it up anyway. So we really had to sell it. And, and I'm thankful that sixteen people, sixteen families purchased homes. I don't know how many students are in those sixteen homes, but I hope there's a number of students there and I hope they are getting a good education in our school system. So, uh, when offers came in, well, I'll buy the property for a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, that wasn't the intent of the sale in the first place. You know, we had a number of citizens pull that, on that stunt on the board, which I don't think any board member at the time appreciated, including myself. The intent was to sell it so that it could become productive to the community, which I think is the same thing you are trying to do with the former flower source property. The question is, is what's the right, what's the right thing to do with it? I mean, y- you know, for myself, an oil change place next to a bank or a gas station, doesn't seem that bad. I don't know, it's not a restaurant, but it doesn't seem that bad to me. And anything else, uh, commercial in the front row and maybe put the single-family homes behind. I don't know, it's about.
We kinda got off track.
Yeah.
The, the motion on the table is.
I think, I think he's just discussing scenarios that play that might form his decision on which way to vote on this and I appreciate those. And I'm, I'm gonna take that same, same avenue.
Actually, I'm not off track at all. The citizens don't know this stuff. You know, when it comes to taxes, you, you put in high-density housing, the school district portion of the taxes are going to pay for the infrastructure for the next twenty-five years. That means every student we get out of that development is paid for by the rest of the taxpayers in the school district. And, and there's one more thing that I just thought of. When it comes to approving one of these TIDS, the school district gets one vote. The village board is one vote, the county is one vote, I believe M A T C is one vote. I think that covers all the votes.
Public member.
It was an at-large, yeah.
A person at large.
Person, okay, and a person at large. So the group that has the most funds to lose is the same group that gets one vote like everybody else. You, you know, it, it, it's not fair. The deck is stacked against the school district in one of these TIDS. So that's why, you know, industrial and commercial, sometimes we've gone. So that's why, you know, industrial and commercial, sometimes we've gone for it, sometimes we haven't. And, but this, this, this is a new level of TID now that I, I simply cannot accept. So I know that's not what we're voting on, but it's part of the discussion for the, the big picture of what a TID is.
I agree with you.
And why taxpayers should be concerned.
I, I agree with you. Um, I think part of, part of this project on the village's standpoint, I think they'd argue, is to to spur, uh, growth within, in, in the community. Whether it's employee growth or employer growth, um, commercial growth or residential growth, right? Um, I, I consider ourselves a pretty good employer. Uh, we employ many, Chris, I don't know-
Five hundred and eighty-ish people.
I don't know how many other businesses in this community, uh, employ five hundred and eighty-ish people, but I feel like that's a substantial number. Um, and if we're affecting the way we can compensate them for the work they're doing to en- enrich our community, uh, that is a very large concern. And I know this board takes hits on their approach to some of those things. I think we've worked very hard on that and continue to, but this is a scenario where when we're trying to, to build that, right? And build out employers in healthy communities is all an aspect of it, we're a very large portion of that process. Um, and I think that goes under discussed. And I think of that when I think of some of this cause and effect that we're weighing. Um, I I don't think, uh, asking, this isn't an ask to stop, this isn't, and 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 I shouldn't say stop. This isn't an ask to terminate, this is an ask of, you, you've mentioned and and we've really implored how much we think these are gonna benefit it. And I think you agree that this will help with these decisions. Let's wait until we get these studies back. If MD Rafer's comes back and says, to your point, there's declining population, there's declining enrollment, your projections forty years out are X, Y, and Z, the answer might be, very much, we need some development. The realities are, this community's gonna develop. We have nothing but land, uh, and that makes it a desirable community. Um, housing markets and all of that that play into it. Uh, I fully respect, the village has, um, some complicated needs with this, that they need development to increase funding, right? And and projection of funding down the road, that's why they're going to a ref or went to a referendum for, for safety, right? You needed that in the budget in order to pay for those police officers that are, are chasing, how many high speed chases? I don't know that I hear, but Highway forty-one, forty-five is significant in my time in twenty years in law enforcement. This community I can see is more and more impacted. And and I, I'm thankful that the community voted in favor of that, that, that referendum. Um, but the reality is, you stay out of more asks like that by spurring more development. Uh, ju- unfortunately, that could then cause us to ask the question, and 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 we know you just asked it, and this shouldn't be a tag team. You ask, we ask, you ask, we ask, that's the last thing we want. I think we can agree to that. Um, so to to ask for this to just slow down. Now, we can sit here and say, this isn't indefinitely a TID yet. Uh, the emails that I got and the asks of of our participation on a joint review board a- a- and the developmental plans that have come forward, I mean, I know the difference in rain and something else, and it's, we're in that category of playing the, oh, I don't know if it's gonna be that yet. And and that's, I think, a reasonable cause for concern around, um, how the Blackstone development. If we're gonna approach that the same way, don't expect anyone in this community t- to respond differently or assume differently. Um, so in in regards to this ask, it it simply is that. Let's wait for the data, right? Let us give that to you. And and if it comes back and says, to quote somebody, build baby build, right? Maybe that's what it says, but I don't know, and I dislike having a conjecture-based conversation around it. And and I don't think it's good for anybody to make high-level impact decisions to that regard. I can't see that this harms. If we're talking about, uh, what's this, the development is twenty years, twenty-seven years, the long-term vision for the village is two months to to dissect it, have the information back, dissect it and understand it, in reality, is that an awful thing to ask? I, I can't see it. I know you have some financial obligations, but you've also explained, uh, one of the tenants of that property is paying upwards of four hundred thousand dollars a monthly rent. Or, or, uh, is it monthly? I don't, yearly, sorry, yearly rent. Um, I don't know what that covers in that, but we're not asking for a year. We're just asking, let us get this data back and and give that to you and supply that to you into this community, into this board to help drive further conversation and in decision-making.
If I can, uh, I guess first just ask one question. Um, do you, do you have a timeline for when that information is gonna get back? And, um, what, you know, how long this pause would be?
The goal from, uh, Monday night will be the P R A J P Cullen presentation, so that information will come out. Um, the Rafer's study, it's all dependent upon all the moving parts and everyone I have to talk to. Um, originally, the timeline was by the conclusion of April. But again, if data or accurate data isn't shared, it's gonna delay.
Okay.
But I can keep you informed on where we're at with them.
Um, a- and then if I could just explain a little bit about the process that we, that we have started and some of the, uh, some of the areas where there's flexibility and some, some of the areas where there, there's limitations. Um, and I don't have all of the dates, so I apologize if I, if I, uh, uh, get a, get a date wrong, slightly wrong. Uh, but there is an organizational meeting of the joint review board scheduled for March thirty-first. Um, and then there is a, a public he- hearing, uh, for the, uh, uh, the creation of the, of tax increment District Ten before the plan commission that is scheduled for, um, April tenth. Um, and one of the things that the, um, and and these, the, the timelines are specified in state statute. There's minimums, uh, there's minimum separation between meetings and then there's maximums in state statutes.
Is this Thursday, April tenth, or did you mean April seventh?
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, April fourteenth, I had, I had March up here. So April fourteenth is the, the plan commission, uh, meeting. And, and that is, that, that has been scheduled, it'll be published. Uh, we had to get the notice out to the newspapers in advance, thirty days in advance, so that's why that's already been scheduled and out there. Um, when the joint review board me- meets on March thirty-first, they will schedule their next meeting. Um, and that's, that'll be, that's one of the items on the agenda for the joint review board meeting. And there will be a range that the joint review board can select, and it has to be, um, a minimum days from the first meeting. And then it has to be, there's a, and I don't recall what it is off the top of my head, but there is a, a, a maximum amount of time they can wait until after the, uh, um, the plan commission and the village board, uh, meet to consider this. So there is some flexibility in that, and I think, um, it, flexibility can extend to the end of April. Um, there, there may not be flexibility, um, under the statutes, uh, you know, beyond, much beyond that. It's something, uh, in-
Can I, can I, 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 I think we understand what you're saying. What triggers the March thirty-first date? What a- is it action that may occur on the board meeting on the seventeenth of this month?
The thirty-first is just a motion for ALIS to go forward.
Yeah, that, that is just, the March thirty-first is just the organizational meeting.
Okay, so there's no statutory requirement that that meeting has to take place?
It has to take place.
No, no, I'm not saying for the, I'm saying, okay, you're explaining a set of timelines that get kicked off. What action is your, is, is the village board taking that starts that clock ticking? And when is that being taken?
That action took place-
Or February seventeenth.
On February seventeenth.
How? What action was taken on February seventeenth?
To go forward.
You, you approved the purchase?
And for the, for the discovery of the TIF to go forward.
Okay.
Pursue ALIS and and to start the, the process.
So you're saying statutorily, the clock is ticking?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So, so with all due respect then, and back to the rain or something else, when we sit here and discuss that this isn't foreseeably a TID, right? But you're telling me on the seventeenth of last month, you've pushed that forward?
It hasn't made it a TID. It basically goes into a discovery and an approval with the first meeting, which is the first TID meeting on March thirty-first, which the, the, uh, taxing districts decide, either it goes beyond that or it does not.
So, i- in your semantical discussion or argument there, right? I, I would call it semantical, right? What you're saying is eloquently, I'll call it, that we're, the village is pushing forward that process for a TID. All while that discussion was playing out over the last couple of months.
No, the village is pushing forward the process of starting the process of discovery of a TID. It's not saying that we are in favor of it because there hasn't been a public hearing or a village board resolution to approve the TID. It basically has said, based on the information that we have received on this development, we're asking ALIS to start the process, which would be the first meeting. But it doesn't mean it's gonna go through because it still needs public hearing and village board approval. It just starts the process as part of the discovery that we've already had, uh, on the information presented. The village board said, this sounds interesting, let's pursue the process of discovery and start the process of TID. And it could stop on March thirty-first if the taxing districts say no. But you have to initiate the process in order to go through to the rest of the discovery.
Given the village's high level of confidence, and I would think it would be a high level of confidence, considering I haven't seen a TID come forward that more than one of us has voted no against.
Hold on, this isn't normal, this is not a normal TID. You've said it over and over again, this states it loudly and clearly of how it's not. Um, so you can't base that off of previous TIDS at all because it's different.
What I'm using that for is to, right, set in stone our concerns. Cause all we can go off of is past actions. And I'll anchor in that again. What we're being told is the motion or the statutory requirements were set in motion starting last month on the seventeenth, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you may have locked yourself into that.
Not a decision on whether the TID is gonna go forward, but, but the-
Not a decision whether to go forward or not, but a decision that requires the joint review board-
Yes.
-to meet and to take the next step forward.
As it has on any others that we've gone through similar process, yes.
Okay.
Continue discussion?
For my fellow board members, if there are items here that you're not comfortable with, maybe you think they go too far, you'd rather not have in here, I have no issues with items being struck from here. If it makes you more comfortable.
Are there any concerns I would, and maybe in that, or a, there is anyone concerned with any of these potentially being inaccurate, uh, given the information we have at this time?
Possibly the several re- residents of the village have expressed concerns of hearing the construction of additional high-density rental units. And I say possibly just because I'm not sure that the school board should weigh in on that matter. That's a, that's a village matter for the voters.
Um, I think that's a statement reflecting what we've seen presented, um, during public comment.
You can't really necessarily validate that.
We, we heard it, we heard it tonight.
When we're talking, well, I know, but when we're talking about, you know, studies and we're asking, when you bring a study forward to have something to back it up, you don't necessarily have concrete data that says this, because you're, we're just hearing from citizens, obviously, that want to. I'm not saying I disagree, I feel the same way, but that's a feeling, that's not based on fact. So unless you can, like, back it up with, uh, some sort of study, some sort of, you understand what I'm saying?
It's just saying that they express concerns. I can show you the last two village meetings that show-
I'm not saying they don't, I have concerns with it.
That's handled at the village level. A school board meeting isn't for the villagers to come and rehash something out.
This isn't rehashing, this is just us noting that citizens have been observed making public comment, that they are concerned with this. I understand what you're saying.
Additional high-density rental units. I can-
Yeah.
The concern to the school board with the residential high-density units, we have covered with, with the financing. I think that's covered in some, a point after this also. I just don't want to turn into the school board taking on village board responsibilities that way. I mean, w- we're here representing Ridgefield, Colgate, Jackson, Polk, other communities too, so.
Yeah. Um, would we need a motion to strike?
I, I would say strike that one.
We would, but I would say let's-
Let me continue if others, yeah, I'm not saying the motion, I'm just saying the process would be, okay? Then if we're saying that, are we removing the, some residents, uh, have expressed positive feedback in portions of the commercial and communities gathering spaces and potential projects but have not been presented with the potential totality of the effects? The very next paragraph, would that not be the same scenario?
Yeah.
Even though we're, our ask is that we want that opportunity to present what we think could affect that?
It's not necessarily pertinent to the school district and what our concerns are moving forward.
See, and and the difference with that one is, you say, with the potential totality of effects, totality of effects, affects school enrollment. So you-
I, I, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just, I'm just calling out if-
That one is, that one is-
I would agree it's grounded back into-
That one is more in line with what we, what we do, so I'm okay leaving that one in.
I, and I think under those, I would agree on that same, I just wanna-
Yep.
Make sure we're not just skipping over-
That's what conversation's for.
Yep. Gentlemen?
So before we get too much further, I'd, I would say ask for a motion to strike those, to make an amendment to the draft resolution to strike those two items.
Then we can talk more about it in detail.
Keep going down the list?
Yep. We're limited to the number of amendments, I believe, that's, I think we're limited to, so.
I would just say, raise any concerns you have with these, we'll pull them into a motion for co- further consideration and then go from there.
I mean, I'm fine with pulling those two into an amendment. I would throw out the last paragraph on the first page as well. The introduction of the apartments represents a significant step towards transforming the Ger- the Germantown into a community akin to metro Milwaukee communities.
I'll agree with that.
Alright, so we can follow some sort of process here, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, no, hold on, are there any other concerns before we get there? And don't, if you lump them into the same, we're gonna have to vote on them.
In totality.
In totality, and we may want one and not the other. So we should review them separately. Are there any other concerns before we get there?
I guess the first one on the back page, I don't know what that is pertinent to, for them, like-
It's pertinent to Rinca's statement.
Yeah, statements last night and previous months that have misrepresented conversations that President Ewer and Dr. Reuter have had with Rinca.
That is, yeah. And I would say that that's, the presentations that were presented were presented on behalf and with the village board. But, uh, Bailey Copeland of Bailey Copeland and Rinca were the ones presenting that information. Uh, Rinca was the one that actually came forward with some of those statements, um, in that portion of the presentation. But the totality of the presentation was presented as a whole from those three entities. And both of those entities represent as contract workers for the village. So they're representing the village interests when making those statements to affirm- So they're representing the village interests when making those statements to affirm, uh, securing approval of this project. Any other concerns? Um, my understanding is we're looking at three then. Um, whereas several residents of the village have expressed, where some residents of the village have expressed positive, and where introduction of hundred of new apartments, uh, represent a significant step. Those are the three we would like to consider.
I'll make a motion to strike those three from the resolution.
I'll second.
Alright, Mr. Byrne with the motion, uh, Mr. Brown with the second.
Amendment, technically to amend.
Uh, to amendment, amendment to the original motion. Discussion. Uh, my, and I'm just gonna go off, my initial is, I think I'm in agreeance with the striking of the several residents of the village have expressed concerns, although I do agree with that statement, I can concur, I, I, it can fall in line with the logic. Mr. Brown's using, um, and whereas introduction of the housing, um, I think that's part of this conversation. Maybe we don't have all of that yet. Um, I do not agree with striking the whereas some residents, given it is anchored in, we are trying to give that, to provide that totality of understanding. So with a motion to strike all three, I don't know where we can go from there. Obviously, it's for further discussion for the rest of it, but my opinions.
Yeah, I mean, I, based off of how the amendment was presented, I'm gonna be voting for the amendment to strike those. Um, I have individual thoughts in each one, but with what we're presented with, with what's on the table, that's where I'm gonna stick over.
I, I think it still gets across the point that we're trying to express, even without those three.
And I, I think the overarching point to really simplify it is, there's a symbiotic relationship between the village and the school district. You got a failing school district, you're not gonna attract people here. You can build whatever you want, okay? Get a strong school district, it becomes a destination. So the fact that this March thirty-first deadline is coming up and we feel kind of powerless there, I can't go, that, that's unfortunate. Hopefully in the future, we can all be on the same page a little bit more. And Dean, I see you going, alright, I don't see what the big deal with the March thirty-first deadline is, is that why you're kinda making it?
I was just thinking it, uh, I, it, it's not a make or breaker. It basically says to AILers, proceed. And it's the first, um, if you look at the, the, um, the format of a joint review board, how it's formed and what its duties are, that first meeting is just a, a, a gathering of that joint review board to say to the community, this is the board that's going to be reviewing it going forward.
And it, and I agree, I get that, the fact that we're all just kinda staring going, we didn't really know about that. And I heard several times in your presentation tonight that you guys say this is market-driven. And, and it is. But that's market-driven from the growth of the village and maybe not in the school district's best interest. So I'm just saying going forward, that's why this, this motion is being thrown out. So I, I hope we're all in agreement with that moving forward.
Mr. Lo?
Um, as far as the initial meeting in February necessitating this March thirty-first meeting, couldn't we just let the March thirty-first meeting go and do another initial meeting similar to what you did in February? Just, just have another starting date and then it just pushes it back?
We, we can't push the March thirty-first meeting back.
He's not, he's not asking to push it back, he's asking to let it expire and then re-approach it.
We have to talk to the attorney?
Yeah, we have to talk to the attorney because we have issued a public notice for March, for, uh, sorry, in April fourteenth, um-
Public hearing?
Public hearing. And by statute, the Joint Review Board has to have their organizational meeting, no le- no less than fourteen days before-
Is, is, is the public notification, the public notification isn't legally retractable? Meaning issuing a secondary public, and I get that it's messy, I'm not, I'm not kidding.
No, what you can do is you can, uh, you can say at the meeting that, uh, it was scheduled for tonight. If anybody is here for that purpose to talk, you're welcome to do so, you know, um, and bring them forward because they took the time, based on what they saw as, as that notice. And then you could say ba- based on whatever reason, the board could vote to say, well, we're really gonna have that, that public hearing and that vote for the Village Board on, on the, uh, possible TIF, uh, on another, another date. So it'll be the fourteenth, twenty-first, be twenty, no, it's fourteen, it'd be second meeting. So then it would be in May, in May.
There are a lot of moving parts and I guess, but-
So I guess, if, if this, if this, if this ask moves forward, you do have a mechanism to, to push the final decision down the road for this information to come in.
We have something to present to the board as a mechanism, yes.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Not saying, it's guaranteed, I'm just saying there is a possibility, I just wanna make sure there's- Uh, I'll bring this back in, I guess, cause it's the, the motion on the table is in regards to these three. Any further discussion on them?
This is motion to amend.
The motion to amend, removal of the fa- the stated, um, three paragraphs from the initial present- presentation of the resolution.
Yeah, paragraph seven, eight, and eleven.
Seven, eight, and eleven. Uh, in that scenario, I will, if there's no further discussion? All in favor for removal?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Hearing none, those are removed. And we return to the original motion with the removals of seven, eight, and eleven. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for roll call vote.
Ewart?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Barney's a yes. Lo?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Thinking about them?
Yes.
That you-
Motion passes, six, oh.
Thank you. There's no objections?
No objections.
Uh, one absent, right?
Absent.
Hey, that passes, uh, there's some proceed, we have to, it looks like we're gonna have to sign the back of this and present it.
This is redrafting.
Yeah.
Clean the document, but then yes.
Yeah. We have, um, if there's no further discussion under new business A, we'll move on to new business B discussion and possible action to amend the twenty-four, twenty-five Board of Education meeting schedule. Um, and that's myself and Dr. Reuter, I think we've discussed throughout the night. And largely driven by our commitment to work in partnership with the village and around some of the deadline, uh, information that we've been provided of potential meetings. Um, I don't know if we have the totality of what we need to make the decisions of what to move and when to move them to. My rough notes are showing, um, a conflict of the four, seven Planning Commission meeting for the Village Board on Monday, which I'm to attend, and the four, seven committee meetings that our board holds.
I, I would just state for, especially since there's misinformation on social media, um, the board, per policy is to approve your board meetings, committee meetings, we do as a courtesy of they may fall. And if you read up the actual schedule, that, uh, was approved in the packet tonight back in April, I believe, of last year. Um, committee meetings, we give as a courtesy of tentative dates. Committee meetings can be held at any time, um, just like we can hold a board meeting, but these are the scheduled monthly board meetings. So if there's a need not to run committees that night because members of this board wanna attend a village meeting, we would just move our committee nights, there's not a need for board action on that.
Um, we've, in the, in this scenario, we've held committees and we've been able to get over to that. I know we have some absentees from board members coming up that may require me to sit in per policy.
And then we would just work, um, with committee chairs and committee members.
I guess I would just ask if we're gonna do that and move those, we'd give advance notice similar to what we did for tonight's meeting as it was not regularly scheduled. Instead of posting it on Friday, we posted it on Tuesday.
Yeah, we, at least a week in advance, yep.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll monitor that. The other one that I had of note is, um, the Planning Commission, potential Planning Commission meeting four twenty-eight, is that? I believe that was an email, and then we have a full board meeting on four twenty-eight, which actually seems late in the month?
It's because of, I believe, where Easter falls or something.
Oh, it's, uh-
Spring break, Easter, like everything.
Easter, yeah, it got moved instead of the second, it's, or third, it's, okay. So we may have to look at moving that. I think we have time between now and our full board meeting to look at that further. This is an action item here, I don't know if we need to make action on it.
Possible action.
Possible action.
So discussion, possible, we don't at this time unless the board should make it- I'd recommend maybe put this same item on- For Monday. For Monday. Yep. In case any new information comes forward.
Absolutely.
And we'll put it the same as discussion, impossible.
I think it's important to, and to what Chris was, or Dr. Reuter was saying, uh, why do we move some of these things around? Uh, it's not to, it's with the intent to keep the, the, the business of the district moving fluidly. And sometimes matters come up and require us to move them. Um, and without impeding or canceling a whole month of meetings or a block of meetings. And if we don't have those committee meetings, there's not much to do at a full board meeting. And to have them all on the same night, we'd probably have to start at about noon. Um, and then not have much time to digest that information before making full board action. Um, so we move these around. Um, I can understand, uh, some community members frustrations with that, but we are posting within full accordance of the statutes. Uh, we, we understand that. And we'll continue to communicate out via any method we can, uh, if these move in the future. But largely, some of these are driven by our, our willingness and want to partner with the village and ensure this communication continues. So we're not looking for any action on that.
And we publish our meetings.
Yeah.
So we record.
So I, I think, I think that is, is, is a hu- huge, um, highlight, and thank you for bringing that up. Every committee meeting this board has, as long as it's not a closed session, is not only broadcast live on our YouTube channel, but it's, it's, uh, recorded there, published there, uh, in perpetuity. And for points of referencing citizens, we talked about this, please go back and look at it. Uh, the, the one-on-one school finance that we may have coming up, that's exactly what that's intended for. And, and that is an act of this board, and it is not an act of many boards, uh, school district or otherwise. That is not a regular practice, I, so I-
Or even publishing a packet from this.
Yeah. Um, and that's not, I'm not, we're discussing other school districts that we get thrown in with.
There's other school districts that run committee meetings at the same time, so you can't attend both.
Yes, so, exactly. Um, and that's an intent and a commitment, and that means these board members are here. Instead of further one or two committee meetings, they're here for three or four to get all of that information, and we appreciate that. So, uh, with that, if there's no discussion on that-
I'll add to that, saying also that, uh, committee meetings, unlike board meetings, are not open to public comment, so.
Correct.
If we do change and run, it's not like the public's not getting hurt.
That, and thank you for bringing that up. One reason why this wasn't run under, um, Buildings and Grounds Committee is we couldn't allow public comment. So that's what the need, one of the needs to, uh, insert it as a full board.
Can I make a special interjection based on my comment and the resolution? Uh, if you look at the board packet, the Village Board packet from February seventeen, their motion was only to direct the staff to close, um, the three parcels. It did not say, and open the TID process.
Okay, I, 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 we, you can share that with us, sorry. I just wanted to be consistent with what's going on. If there's no further discussion on this action, I will take, uh, one more.
Move adjourned.
Second. Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned at nine forty-four PM. Thank you for coming and listening. Good luck, hopefully you're still awake.